...of the Milton Planning Board. My name is Brian Furz. I'm chairman of the Planning Board. I ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, starting with Alex Whitehead on my right.
Alex Whitehead.
Michael Kelly, member.
Bill Clark, planning director.
David Clark.
Tim Serwinski, assistant town planner.
April Limerow, member.
And Cheryl is coming in the door.
We're able to guys to be introducing herself or joining us just momentarily. We have, our next meeting dates are January 12th and January 26th. We have some minutes to approve in our packets. I know we got comments from Cheryl, and I believe Alex may have a couple of comments.
I took her comments and read through and made some additional comments.
And while Mike and Cheryl and April take a look at that, we have a quick item that I'm going to add to the agenda for new business while we're going through the minutes. I think we can do this very quickly. 591 Blue Hill Avenue has, we approved an A&R plan for them back in probably April or May, maybe not even, probably not even that long, June, July.
I think it was in the summer.
Yeah, okay. That's for two house lots just off of Blue Hill Avenue. The date on the plan is incorrect. Go ahead, Bill.
It was a, it was two houses allowed by the zoning board of appeals, two 32,000 square foot lots in a 40,000 square foot area. They were approved by the zoning board of appeals. The problem was the name on the application going to the zoning board of appeals was spelled wrong. So it had to go back, have the whole decision rewritten, had to go back out, get new signatures, and it was just passed the end of November by the zoning board. Now it comes back to the Planning Board and the date has to be corrected because you could not have signed before the zoning board's appeal passed. So it's just a matter of signing a new date on the plan.
It's exactly the same plan that we endorsed before.
The exact same plan.
So I would move that we authorize Mr. Clark to execute the plan on behalf of the board. There's not requirements of division approval.
Give a second.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just quickly, we have, tonight we have, for new business, we have a sign application for 502 to 504 Granite Avenue, which is the existing Sleepies building. We'll be discussing that at the request of the Board of Selectmen. We have two public hearings, one beginning at 7:15 for 37 Central Avenue applicant for Vinjohn LLC slash John Burke. And then we have a 7:30 public hearing for Polthe Homes Special Permit for Cluster Development, Milton Woods Town Farm Site. We'll also be discussing the Planning Board Master Plan Implementation Goals this evening as old business, discussion of fiscal year 2018 budget, an A&R for 1259 Brush Hill Road, a recreational marijuana moratorium article, discussion of Carberry Estate zoning, and discussion of Ice House zoning. With all of that in mind, is there anybody here that would like to speak to anything during Citizen Speak that is not listed under any of the items I just read off? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go right into new business. 502 to 504 Granite Avenue Mattress Firm Sign Application. We have, I'm sorry, oh, yes. Did you both get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Did you get it?
I did.
Okay.
So, but was this?
Your changes are included.
Yeah, right, included, okay.
Do you have, do I have a motion?
So moved.
To approve the minutes?
To approve the minutes of whatever it is.
December.
December.
As of when?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that reminder, April. All right, we're for Cheryl. We're going to go right into 502, 504 Granite Ave, Mattress Firm Sign Application. So anything from staff to introduce this?
Existing sign was, this was for the Sleepies building. Kennedy Carpet, now it's been sold to the Falcone Group. The Falcone Group got it, and it was being switched from, during the process of switching it from Sleepies to Mattress Firm. It's, Mattress Firm is buying out Sleepies, so it's just changing the name, it's not changing the business. Sign Review Committee has looked at it, they like the idea of the sign on the wall, they have historically voted against the sign on the roof. That is what Attorney Corcoran is going to talk about tonight.
And what is that board being asked to do? This board?
Starting last fall, not this past fall, the fall before, the Selectmen started a process of, until we have a new sign by law in place, we have a 10-step process to get a sign. And in order to get a sign, one of the steps is to get approval from the Planning Board on that sign.
All right, Mr. Corcoran.
Well, I guess I'm here because there's a new process, although I'm not sure what the board's jurisdiction is, or what authority the board has to hear the matter and make determinations. This is, the signed by law provides all of the sign authority in the Board of Selectmen. We have filed an application with the Board of Selectmen to simply change the lettering on two signs that have been previously approved by the board through three decisions issued, I believe in 2008, 2011, and again in 2014. There, the two signs are Sleepies, which is on the westerly side of the building, sits on the edge of the town of Milton and the city of Quincy. It is just off of the east side of the Granite Ave exit off of the expressway. The Mattress Firm, or the Sleepy sign on the westerly side of the, of the building is visible from the southbound lanes on the expressway. There's a separate lighted sign on the northbound side of the, on the, on the south-facing roof, side of the roof of the building that is visible from the northbound side of the expressway. That sign's structure has existed since at least 2008, it was installed pursuant to a valid building permit. It has been allowed to be named Sleepies. Earlier this year, Mattress Firm, which is a larger national mattress company than is Sleepies, acquired all of the rights of Sleepies as a business and is simply applying to change the lettering on the sign to reflect the proper and new ownership of the bit of the Sleepies business. It's no longer, it's no longer Sleepies, it's now Mattress Firm. The sign as you see it in that photograph is, is how it would appear. And so, that's the premise, that's what we're asking for. We're looking for a hearing before the Board of Selectmen to approve the name change, and we've been directed to meet with the Planning Board to discuss it, so.
So, I have a quick question for you. Under your application materials, there's a five-page document, we have it saved to signed sheets. It's under the header of Mattress Firm, and under a block called City Code, it reads in part, "There's an existing electronic reader board at this site, and the community was not happy that the city allowed it. This would have to go through the special exception process again and may not be approved a second time. This process takes three months." Can you address that?
We know that there has been a series of contested hearings historically before the Board of Selectmen with respect to the approval of the Sleepy sign, particularly the south-facing sign. We're going back to the Board of Selectmen simply to change the lettering on that sign.
So does this constitute a new special exception, or is the special exception?
No, the existing, the, the most recently granted permit provides that if the, if there is a change in the lettering, anything to do with the change in the sign, changing it from Sleepies to something else will require a new permit from the Selectmen.
Okay. All right.
I think we have a right to it.
All right, any question, any discussion or questions?
Well, just a question along those same lines. My recollection is when the Sleepy sign went in, that the Board of Selectmen said that since there was history with the, that, a sign in that location, that they were basically required to approve that sign. Can anybody speak to that?
I know that council for Sleepies at the time presented its own legal argument that was accepted, I believe was accepted by town council. Town council drafted a set of findings of fact and decisions, and, and bulleted decisions that were adopted by the Board of Selectmen in each of the three times that they appeared before the board. The most recent one, one was 2014, and in 2014, the board, the board's decision was specific to the lettering of Sleepies as one of the decisions, and they were required to come back, were required to go back before the Board of Selectmen to change the lettering on the sign.
In looking at the memo that's associated with this, where it says in the paragraph, the second paragraph underneath property and signage use history, the permit allows the sign to be illuminated from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That, those are like billboard hours, I believe. What are the hours that the business is actually open, where someone would need to see the sign to be able to find their way to the business? Well, my suggestion would be that if we're asked to have an opinion about this, and as a, from a design point of view from the Planning Board, can we go back to the photograph? I mean, I do agree with the sign committee that, that, that particular sign on the roof of the building is not really conducive to kind of a village-type of business district signage. It's really more like a billboard sign. And if there's no legal reason that it has to remain, I would suggest that it not be replaced. And if it is required to remain, then I would say that it should not be lit beyond the hours that the business is open.
Okay. Michael, do you have anything?
I agree with Cheryl.
Okay. Mike?
I think Cheryl made some good points, and I, I thought we talked about the sign laws before and that things wouldn't be grandfathered. What a new ownership.
I don't like this procedure because we come in and they say, "What do you individuals think about this sign?" And we have nothing to go on, we have no public input. You may have read the newspapers about prior applications. We have apparently a, some sort of legal opinion that the sign is grandfathered. Is that what you say? The town council offered some?
There's been substantial back and forth between prior council for Sleepies and town council about the legal import of prior decisions, the import of the existing building permit, et cetera, with respect to the sign. It is a sign that is visible, it is intended to be visible from the expressway because most of the business that is attracted to that site comes from the expressway, either north or south. It needs to be able to be visible from the expressway. Those were findings that were made by the Selectmen in prior permits. So, we understand, we need to go back and get permission in the Selectmen to change the lettering on the sign, and so that's the application process that we're following.
I still don't understand what town council has, was he just churning? I mean, did he come up with any sort of decision that?
He made recommendations that were adopted by the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I think that we should know what his recommendations were, personally. And I would like to, I just, coming in and saying, "What do you think of this sign?" I mean, it's not the greatest sign I've ever seen, that's for sure, but, you know, I don't like the process. I've been just coming in and saying, "What do you think of this, Planning Board people?" I don't think it's the way we should operate.
Ultimately, we're, I mean, I tend to, with Alex, I'm not exactly sure what our, just what our, go ahead, Bill. You have some things to say.
There is no current rule for the Planning Board per Milton Zoning for Signs. The process that the Selectmen set up was asking for an opinion from the Planning Board on the sign that they are now going to have at one of their future meetings. One of the 10 steps in the process is to get an opinion from the Planning Board on the sign.
So we're essentially being asked to be another design review board?
Even though it goes to the sign, yes. Even though it's already gone to the Sign Review Committee, yes, you're being asked to be another.
So I'm not sure that we, I'm not sure I feel comfortable overruling anything the Sign Committee says, frankly.
I believe the last time this came up was the Dunkin' Donuts on Adams Street, and the board pretty much gave the thumbs up to what the Sign Review Committee had said.
We had a hearing on Dunkin' Donuts.
That was for site plan approval.
I understand, but this sign was going around.
But you've done site plan on this building, too, so that's...
So...
Of course, we've indicated, I mean, why don't you just give the tape of what we've said here and call it a day?
I'm not sure there's much more that you can do.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing we can do is agree that, you know, we can, we can take a, the only other thing we can do is take a, take a motion to have a vote to agree with the Sign Review Committee and potentially add the stipulation that we think the sign shouldn't be lit, but that's, I'm not even sure we have the power to do that. So I think Alex probably is on the right track. Let's give them, have them read the record, have them read the minutes.
Were you expecting a vote?
Complimentary.
You expected a vote? There is no vote.
I mean, we don't have anything to vote on, yeah.
So I think we're just, I agree with what you said. I mean, we've cast our opinions, that's it.
You've actually got, you're looking at two signs, you're looking at one on the wall and you're looking at the message board.
Do we know what the date of the hearing is?
No.
Okay. When we have the date of the hearing, if you'd like to tell us what the hearing date is at one of our future Planning Board meetings?
I don't think, I don't think they set the date of the hearing until they have everything checked off on their list.
Okay, well, they've met with the Planning Board. I think the Planning Board would be happy if we have availability to attend their meeting and give our opinion. Someone can represent the board's opinion. Otherwise, they can look at the minutes, so.
The issue on the building itself has always been, when it was originally built, where it says Mattress Firm on that sign now, that's where the LED board was. The owner of the building then decided that he wasn't getting enough visibility of it, and he asked the Selectmen to move it to the roof. The Selectmen agreed, they allowed it to be moved to the roof, and they allowed it to be moved to the roof for the, for the fact that it couldn't be seen from any residents in the town of Milton. It could be seen from the highway, or it could be seen from Willard Street in Quincy, but it could not be seen from a residence in the town of Milton. When Kennedy Carpet had it, it had three signs, and it would rotate through the three signs. When Kennedy left and Sleepies came in, they didn't want to have the rolling sign, so they asked for a negotiated sign that would say Sleepies where it says Mattress Firm, and that the message board on the roof was a black background, red letters that said Sleepies, no stars, no anything, just Sleepies. Again, they went with the premise that it could only be seen from the highway, it could only be seen from Willard Street in Quincy.
Well, the Selectmen can make the same ruling if they want to, but it's not our, it's not our decision, so.
Right.
Let us know when the hearing is, we'll be happy to send a representative if one of us is available, otherwise, they'll have to look at the tape.
I just want to set some context here as well, because there was a citizens petition that made it to town meeting that was a result of the Sleepy sign, and it asked for a moratorium on signage. And then we took up signage here, but then there was some ruling, some national legal ruling, and the signage revisions have languished as we've been waiting for an opinion. So I do think that there is this sort of interim flux period that the Selectmen are working with, and I do think it is something that residents, especially in that part of town, are interested in. So I do respect the Selectmen's approach to try and get input. I do think that is why we have this, the Sign Review Committee, but until we get a new signage by law, I don't think that it's a bad idea for it to come to the Planning Board.
Can we get an update on where the signed by law revisions stand?
We'd have to talk about that amongst ourselves. It's our, it's in our court.
Yeah, but that's why I'm looking at Tim.
Oh.
Working on it. I can have something to you before the end of January.
But we didn't want to clutter the May warrant with signs because...
Well, yeah, with an eye, with an eye towards October.
It belongs in October, right.
It's, it's been something that I, you know, we have been working on, but it's very easy for that to be backburnered when we have some, some of the major projects in front of the board right now, so if that's sort of being frontburnered more, we can, we can work on that.
I didn't mean to suggest it should be frontburnered more, whatever that means, but I did appreciate the update, because I think it is an important issue. We did talk about it.
I'm going to move us along, we have a lot to cover tonight, so, thank you. You've got your marching orders, I think. Hopefully, it'll get you to where you need to be. All right, we're going to move on to the 7:15 site plan approval for 37 Central Avenue applicant Vinjohn LLC slash John Burke, to be immediately followed at its conclusion by the 7:30 public hearing, which we will not open until the 7:15 concludes. I'm going to have staff start again, and then we'll go right to you. Anything from staff on this?
This is a site plan approval for 37 Central Ave, which is the, the building right behind the small building where the plate and Esprit de Vin are. Umay hairstylist used to be on the first floor, and then there's residential on top. I'll let the applicant go a little bit more into detail about, about the project, but in the materials that you have, staff performed a, a technical review based on the requirements of site plan approval in the Planning Board Rules and Regulations. Part of your materials include a supplementary memo that goes through all of those requirements. I think it's dated...
December 12.
December 12. So if, if you want to see what the, sort of the results of that technical review are, you can go through those requirements. And it, it checked out, it's a relatively small project involving closing in a porch and building a small addition, as well as a, a handicap access ramp, and I'll let, I'll let the applicant go more into, into detail there. Bill, do you have anything?
Yep. It's already gone through zoning board of appeals. It was, it's out for signatures right now. It should be, I think it's done now, isn't it? It's done, no, it's done tomorrow. Ready for, I think it's up, up tomorrow. There is no increase in impervious surface, so drainage isn't an issue. Kind of more of the same of what's already there.
Okay. Ms. Corcoran?
Thank you. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of the applicant Vinjohn LLC, I'm joined by John Burke, who is the manager of the LLC. And Mr. Burke, the LLC bought this property from Umay, the hairstylist, in May of this year. The building is a two-and-a-half-story dwelling, dwelling-style building that sits on the edge of the town's business district. It is a dramatic piece of property that rises up from front to John Elliott Street. The building sits on top of Lily Ledge and drops down to the rear to Elliott Street, so it has a frontage on it on central, but drops back down to Elliott Street. On the left-hand side of the property are two residential units, one of which, the one that butts really the building, is substantially below the grade of the building. There's almost a cliff that drops down off on either side to the, to the residential building on the left and to the small commercial building on the right. We were before the Board of Appeals on November 1, seeking a variance to enclose the front, the porch that is on the left-hand side of the building. In the photographs that I provided that attach to the, the building, excuse me, the memo that I submitted on September, on December 12, I have a photograph, I think I have a photograph of the, the porch in the rear, on the side that is to be filled in. There's a pre-existing non-conforming side yard setback issue here, which is at about 2.8 feet. Interestingly, the bylaw, because this is in a business zone, has either a six-yard side yard, six-foot side yard setback, or a zero side yard setback. So we could have built out to the lot line without permission of the Board of Appeals, or whether that would have been bringing a structure to the edge of the property and looming over the top of the next-door neighbor. We felt it was more appropriate to seek the zoning relief to only have the ability to enclose the porch, and I think as part of that presentation, the board, the Board of Appeals agreed, it would be less impactful on the next-door neighbor, you would be enclosing any activity that takes place on, on the porch. We did not, and separately, because it is a building in a business zone, we didn't require a special permit to have a mix of uses for the property. So the board separately granted a permit to allow first-floor office with second-floor apartment, and that's the plan going forward. We're adding, as the, as the application says, several hundred square feet. The total renovation of the property, including the addition, exceeds 800 square feet, which triggers site plan approval. One of the photographs, two of the photographs that I provided show the area that will be modified to smaller. Photograph that has, you can see the dumpster in the rear of the photograph, and the next one, which is a little closer up, this is the rear facade of the building. See how the pavement comes right to the edge of the building? The building is surrounded by pavement. Purpose here is to remove the pavement as necessary, put a new foundation in, and extend to the rear this addition to the first floor. It would be exchanging impervious surface for impervious surface. And so, there is, the board determined that there was adequate parking. There are seven parking spaces on the property, six that are striped on a, on the pavement that goes down to the back of Elliott Street, and then there is a small one-story garage that may or may not remain. If it is removed, creates the opportunity to increase the impervious surface, but at the moment, the plan is to leave it in place. Because this is a commercial building with an office, we do have to provide handicapped accessibility, so there is a ramp up to the new entryway in the back rear right. No other impact to the property. There are some beautiful trees on the front of the building and to the side of the building between the wine shop and the property that sort of sit on, within the cliff. Those won't be touched, the pervious area will not be touched, and during the construction, we'll insert, or install a silt barrier to collect any construction runoff during the construction. So with that, I'll open it to questions and...
Cheryl?
Will there be trees removed between, to accommodate the addition where the existing porch is?
No.
No.
Okay. And was there any, okay?
Is the existing porch simply just going to enclose the area around what's already...
Okay, it's not going to expand it.
Bring it out by two feet.
It's going out by two feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And then is, the, there's no objection from the immediate abutter, Looney?
No, Nicole, and, you know, my name is John Burke, and I've been living in this town for about 37 years. It's kind of like coming home for me, because many, many years ago, when I got out of pharmacy school, I actually managed the OSCO, which was right over the bridge, for about 12 years. And so, my, my wife Mary was a teacher in Milton, and my daughter is here with my grandkids, and so I worked for a company by the name of Staples. And at some point, you know, I started there when it was a startup company, now it's a $20 billion company, but I'm not going to be there forever. So I need like a little place on Monday to read the newspaper. So I need like a little place on Monday to read the newspaper, I can get out of the house and maybe start a business and start up with my three children, which that's our plan. That's what the Vinjohn LLC is. And so I fell in love with this area many, many years ago, and it's kind of like coming home. And so I thought it was an ideal location because you can get a little income upstairs. The apartment, we're redoing that right now, keeping the character of what it was with this beautiful gumwood. It's terrific. And it's a two-bedroom apartment that we'll be renting. Hopefully, we can, we can occupy it so we can get some cash coming in. And then at some point, we're going to also have an office, and it's going to be really a family office right now. And at some point, I may have a partner that comes in to take an office or two, if you will, but it's, I'm going to be the tenant there. And so I've met all the neighbors. They're terrific. You know, we bought a couple of bottles of wine from Keith today and went into the plate and bought a blondie. I mean, so it's just, it's a great area, to be honest with you. And I think my hope is to add even more value to it at some point. And if, at some point, if you want to come by and look at the inside, it's going to be stunning as far as, you know, bringing back the old look and feel of that building. And it sits up on a stately mound, if you will. And we can do some pruning, I think, on some of the bushes and the trees and really bring it back to where it probably was maybe 10 or 15 years ago. So that's my hope.
I think it's great to have the building be repurposed and occupied and have it be mixed use. I think it is in keeping with the rest of the Central Ave. district there, especially with 36 Central across the street and with One Elliott coming. But I just wanted to make sure, though, that the immediate residential abutters didn't have any objections. Okay.
Yeah, I talked with Nicole, who's on the left, and she had, you know, some initial, we had some initial discussions, and they've just been great. They've just been great.
Thank you.
April?
Wouldn't you say that there's over 800 square feet going to be added?
No.
No.
386 square feet being added, but when you add in the restoration of the interior, the total restoration exceeds 8,000 square feet, just 800 square feet, which triggers the requirement for a site plan approval.
And, you know, I just want to compliment Joe, you know, Joe Prondak. I really never had any dealings with him before, but you hear these stories. And I'll tell you, he's been just great, to be honest with you. He said, "Well, maybe we can do it this way in phase one, and then maybe we can do this," which we're in phase two right now. So he kind of helped us get over the hurdle, if you will. I thought he was terrific, so I'm not sure if you get a lot of compliments about Joe, but he just, he was, in my opinion, he, you know, sometimes you, sometimes you get these bad vibes from folks. I just, I just found the opposite. He was really square with me. And as a taxpayer, I said, you know, "What can I do? What can I do?" And he was pretty good about it, so he's a compliment to the town.
Mike, any else?
There's just, there's no real purpose change here. It's been business on the first floor.
Yeah.
In fact, Yumei, the hairstylist, lived upstairs when she had her hair salon downstairs. Because it is now not a residence and in her business, it's a separate apartment, we had to re-permit that as a mixed use, and the Board of Appeals granted that request.
What type of business is that?
You know, when I started at Staples, it was a startup. We have a couple of stores now. It's a $20 billion business. I would love to get into a startup. You know, I've got my three children, Lauren, who's a nurse, Chris, and Maddie. They're both, they're all pretty bright kids, so we started the LLC. I'm not sure yet. Probably real estate investment, consulting, maybe, you know, there's some very creative folks within the town of Milton, you know. Pat Patev, I don't know if you know him, he has hourly nerds, startup company, just came from our, you know, he went to high school with my son. That type of energy, I'd love to get, to be honest with you, in that, and maybe help some young businesses, to be honest with you. Kind of get a bite of the apple, to be honest with you, because there's a lot of, a lot of creative minds out there. Sometimes they need a place to sit, and wouldn't that be nice to afford that, to that group, so?
So like an incubator-type of model?
Yeah, wouldn't that be awesome to do something like that, really? You know, it just kind of, it makes you think of the whole, you think differently about that, to be honest with you. And we have some very, very creative people within this town that would probably covet a shot to go after that, something like that. But that's, you're just asked, I'm just thinking outside the box, to be honest with you.
Anything else?
Looks good to me.
Okay.
We'll tell Joe to watch the tape.
Yes, I'll definitely make sure I give Joe a butter there. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Okay. Do I have a motion from the board?
Still moved. Oh, sorry. Motion to approve the site plan approval for 37 Central Ave. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
We need a form of a written decision. I'll provide the board with a draft of the decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one point of criticism coming in here. It's a case of a W.B. Mason copy paper. So we'd show like Staples a shot too. I don't know if you guys control it, but we'll be...
We do not. Okay, 7:30, public hearing for Polty Homes. Special permit for cluster development. Milton Woods Town Farm Site continued from December 8 is our next agenda item. I know I saw the applicant somewhere. Evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Tim, do you have anything for us?
We received a draft special permit from the applicant last week. It was distributed on Friday. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at it. And that's all she wrote.
All right. I'll turn to the applicant then.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Mark Mastriani, Reed Blue with Polty Homes. We also don't have anything additional to add than what Tim just mentioned. We did, we did submit a draft special permit to the board as requested, and we're here at your pleasure to answer any questions and to go through the process.
One minute. So I have a...
I have a question. Have process?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead then.
No, please ask question.
I did read through this, and I do have comments. I was just wondering whether we're going to go through this or are we going to circulate comments?
So I wanted to just have a quick conversation with the board about kind of where we stand. So we are currently open. Public hearing is still open. We had a discussion towards the end of last meeting about the status of the applicant with regard to the 30-some-odd acre, I think it's 30 acres flat, that the application is on. There's another portion of a four-acre adjacent site that the town Affordable Housing Trust controls that is required for... Excuse me? Governor Shoton Trust, excuse me, controls for, that would be required for a stormwater easement as well as for the affordable housing component of the project. The board, we have to decide as a board how we want to go forward. The board was a little bit reluctant to issue a permit based on the indeterminate status of that four acres and the lack of an existing waiver in place. My understanding from the Board of Selectmen is that the process will still take a bit longer to finalize those two pieces. It is my opinion, but I'm not the legal person on the team, so I'd like to hear from Alex and perhaps John Flynn, that we could probably issue a special permit here because the, it would then be the burden of the applicant to go out and perfect their title before they could execute the special permit and move it, move the process along for them and move it off of our docket. If there's nothing else we need to discuss with the public and we're ready to deliberate. Alternatively, I think we need to figure, we'd have to basically put this on hold until the process resolves with the selectmen. So if you're interested in giving us your opinions, Alex, I'd love to hear them.
I think that we can do a condition. I think we can do a number of conditions. Of course, we want the conditions to be solid. But I think we can proceed with this.
Okay.
I've looked at it, but revealing a 12-page legal document, you don't do in a day.
Correct.
So I don't have, I don't have any reviews coming tonight.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board on that position?
I'd be very supportive of moving this off our docket and back to where the decision points are in the Board of Selectmen issuing a permit with conditions.
What happens if they, they don't get access to the four acres and they can't use it for their drainage system? Their drainage system doesn't work, therefore?
Well, their special permit relies on it, so effectively, that means the special permit's not worth the paper it's written on until they get back...
So they got to come back and start the process again?
They have to come back and get an amendment to the permit to change it.
An amendment and start the process again?
They could start, they could do either. Be their discretion at that point.
Be a significant amendment.
Well, I mean, they say as far as affordable housing, that they will either get permission to do to affordable units in the town farm or they will provide two units off-site, or presumably, they will provide two units onsite.
Right. And the stormwater is, you'll have to figure it out.
The stormwater is something we've dealt with before.
Pretty wicked, but they'll figure it out. Okay, so then my second question is whether we want to move the process forward with the meeting open or if someone would like to entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Just a second question.
Sorry, yes, go ahead.
The, the last time they were here, the tree cut restriction, or I think we wanted to reword it as the buffer zone restriction. It was like a three or four-page document. Now it's a, now it's a couple paragraphs. I'll have to get back into that to see how much that changed.
Well, we want something that will create a buffer zone. I haven't, I expect that it's going to have to be changed and supplemented, but...
But I mean, if we vote on this presently, is this...
We're not going to vote on this tonight.
Okay.
So in terms of process, I'm just, like to talk it through a little bit. When we did Thayer Nursery, we, in the end, we ended up going word by word, paragraph by paragraph, and doing the final edits here, right up on the screen. Is that where we intend to go with this, after some review and initial comments back? Like, some of the comments or concerns that I have here might need to be addressed to the applicant, and some of it might be more, I mean, in terms of an opinion about whether to close the hearing or not. I think we've, we've heard a lot, we've received a lot, and I think really, it's a matter of making sure that this document captures what we've discussed. So I would be fine with closing the hearing, but I do want to spend significant time going through the details of this. So, Alex?
You want to do that tonight at the expense of your later items?
No, because I think everybody should have an opportunity to read it thoroughly.
I think that, I think that that would be...
So I think the idea that you're proposing, we close the public hearing, I think everyone would circulate comments, which we would then probably have to go through at a subsequent meeting with the applicant in the room, so they can hear what we're talking about. But ultimately, the deliberation is between the five members of the board at that point, and the special permit is really issued based on the deliberations of the board if we close the hearing. And we would circulate our comments, and we probably would end up going through it close to line by line because some of the comments may need to be worked out between the different language the two different members propose. That would be my expectation. Great, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a, kind of a procedural question. Would, we would, would the board consider leaving the public hearing open and deliberating amongst yourselves, however you wish to do it? The reason being, any event that there's any changes or updates to the plan that might either come out of your discussions or might come out of a hoped-for decision from the trustees that may require, you know, some tweaking of the property line or something on the plan?
One, one other thing, too, is that at the last meeting, we submitted an updated entryway with the bus wait, the kid waiting area. And we, we have not submitted that change as part of like a final plan set that you would reference in a decision. So if you close the public hearing, I wasn't sure if we could actually submit the final, latest, and greatest plan set that incorporates the last, you know, few, you know, agreements that we made to the plans. And so if it stayed open until the next meeting for the reasons that Reed mentioned and for the reasons to submit another plan set, then make sure that that's a complete, you know, most up-to-date plan set that represents everything we committed to.
Cheryl, do you have a question?
Right, so I think actually that makes sense. And now that I look back at some of my notes I have on the sidelines here or the side of this, I think it makes sense, too, because a couple of the comments that I had had to do with probably some things that would need to be submitted. And I can go through those if you, a couple of those, if you are interested now, or I can send those in. But one of them in particular that we talked about last time at the end, I think, was the fact that that, the storm drainage system that would be on the town-owned property is designed to account for the property the way it is now, plus a relocated pest house. But what we haven't discussed is whether it should accommodate more than that, so that if there is some redevelopment of that property, how would that be done? So that, coming out of our discussion, we may ask for some revision to that design in that location. And then another thing was the, on the, and the deed restriction in the tree cut area is that having a submission of an existing condition survey, which identifies the trees of a certain caliper, so that that becomes our baseline. Otherwise, we don't have a baseline or a benchmark against which we're working. I think you have had that. And when we did the site walk, we were looking at something, but I don't know that that's something that's a, you know, kind of a drawing in that kind of form. So I'm thinking that might be helpful as well.
You want a plan that shows the existing trees there to...
It's a buffer zone, in that buffer zone, yeah.
So everything down to a, I don't know, four, six-inch caliper that has to be displayed on a plan so that we know we're going there two years from now, if thousands of them are gone, that's why.
Tim?
If you do keep the hearing open, this hearing will have to be continued to January 26. April missed a hearing and watched it on the tape. She can't miss another one and still be able to vote. So with that in mind, I think if anyone has identified any, like Cheryl did, things that might need to be produced, going over that tonight might be a good idea, just to sort of, so it's a productive four weeks.
But the affordable housing piece, we don't have it tonight, and we might get it.
A comment on your comment, Cheryl? What grounds do we have to have them display to us that their drainage system can accommodate some future use of the four acres of land that they don't own?
Because they're going to be owning that drainage system, so we want to make sure we protect the rights, I think, of the town to be able to redevelop that property without having to build its own separate drainage system.
No, it seems to me that would be up to the trustees to then say to them, you know, "Well, yeah, we'll give you the right to use the land, but you have to accommodate something." But for us to tell them that they have to accommodate some use of, people, they're asking permission to use their land, doesn't seem to jive to me. If they, if they get permission to use the land to accommodate their drainage system, then beyond that, what...
The trustees might be misguided.
That's up to the trustees.
They're taking up that same issue. You're both on the same page.
Well, maybe we'll have some resolution by the end of January.
You follow what I'm saying?
I agree with you, Mark.
It'd be up to them to say, "If you want to use our land, you got to accommodate something," but I don't see where we have a right to tell them they got to accommodate something for the future for somebody else that they're dealing with in a kind of separate issue or in a separate forum, if you will.
We should be able to have a pretty good... We should be able to have a pretty good draft by the 26th, I think.
I do know that on that drainage piece, that I have asked, what will that system accommodate? It will accommodate everything that is on there right now, all of the impervious surface goes in, will go into it. We have the, the barn in the surrounding area, we have the animal shelter in the surrounding area, we've got the men's house, the mains alm, alm's house, and we have the pest house, and we've got the driveway that is considered the road. All of that right now is going into that system, and the system is designed to accommodate it. There is the potential that, yes, the system could be made to handle something else on that site. What is that something else? That's the part we don't know, but no...
My, my point is that because it's taking up a large chunk of the four acres, this storm drainage, that if the town wants to do something with the remaining acreage, they shouldn't have to carve out land there for storm drainage.
Correct.
It ought to be accommodated in the part that they're basically giving over to storm drainage.
All my point is, is that's not really discussion for us to have. That's up to the town to take up with the people that want permission to use their land.
So Bill, maybe transfer my comments to the Board of Selectmen, if you will.
I've already, I've already done that.
They have a lot to learn from tonight's hearing. The only other thing I wanted to raise is I'd like to see some sort of, I'd be interested in staffs, maybe staff can have a conversation with the applicant offline, some sort of surety bond, performance bond, as part of the special permit application. We haven't done a lot of those in the past, but I think based on some previous issues that have come before the board, we'd like to start including that. So, we don't have a specific guideline for it, I don't believe, but it would be helpful that maybe have the staff and the applicant talk about it and bring something back for our consideration.
The subdivision regulations have, have that. I don't know if you want to apply that.
No, you can kind of make a recommendation to us in consult, consultation with the applicant.
So, one other item that would require submission, I didn't see anywhere in here the requirement to submit a construction management plan or a phasing plan. So if there's going to be phasing, or how, the sequence of the construction, I think would be useful, and the construction management plan, I think, would be helpful. And in, if you would also, I guess, consult with the DPW about, since this will become a town road, in that phasing plan, in terms of when you actually, when the town accepts the road, is it after all, construction of all homes, and therefore, we wouldn't have construction vehicles coming across the final top coat on a town-owned prop road that the town has to maintain?
Yeah, we can talk to DPW about that. Typically, it's after all the road construction is complete, but we're usually done with the homes prior to that. We usually try to complete all the home construction, and then we put the top coat on at the end, so to minimize the construction traffic like you suggested.
Anything else?
No, I just, Cheryl, again, makes a good point, a construction plan would be good with, you know, truck routes, if you're going to blast any, you know, restrictions on time of day and the type of thing.
Okay, so can I have a motion to continue this hearing to January 26th at 7:15?
It'll move.
Second.
New discussion, on favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. And just as a parting point of information for the board's knowledge, we did submit a written request to the trustees, the town manager, to meet with them and try to move these issues along that we all have been talking about. We're still waiting for a response, so, you know, hopefully we'll get some traction on that too. Thank you for the 26th.
Thank you. And if anything prior to 26th, feel free to communicate it to the staff, and they'll make sure they get it to us as we look at the, as we look at the drafts.
Thank you, that'd be very helpful. Thanks, and have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
All right, we're going to move to the A and R for 1259 Brush Hill Road, President's double A, A and R lots from the 13.74 acre parcel, please.
I'm still waiting for the rest of my team, because after our last few experiences, I told them not to come till 8 o'clock.
Okay.
So they should be here shortly, so perhaps you could do another agenda item and...
Very well, thank you. Nothing else is going to be quick.
I know.
So I think they've deferred their position.
I don't think the recreational marijuana...
I don't know, is recreational marijuana quick?
It should be quick.
All right, let's give it a shot.
Yeah.
We need Bill for that?
It will be, it will be helpful, but...
Do you want to start it?
I, I think it's a good idea.
To?
Have recreational marijuana. Have a moratorium until there's more.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought you were talking about recreational marijuana. Did we get anything in our information on this?
You got a draft last time. I didn't distribute new copies. I think I distributed it electronically.
Yeah, it's just from the last time?
Yeah.
Nothing new came in?
So where did Bill go?
I mean, part of the moratorium is wait until the state establishes, got my...
Issues some regulations, that's really the major...
And possibly abends the statute. I mean, there's all kinds of reasons to go for that.
The moratorium.
This is the very same approach that we took with the medical marijuana. So, I think it makes sense to do it on this one.
Okay. Sounds like we have consensus. I don't think so. I mean, do we have, is there any language concerns we need to worry about? I know with the last one, we had a question for you about the changes in the drafts versus the medical marijuana draft, and if there was anything substantial we needed to be aware of.
We'll wait for Bill on that.
Okay.
But yeah, and the other thing that the, the moratorium would do is, I also distributed the language of the act as it exists right now, as approved in question four. There are sort of opt-out options for a townwide referendum to either prohibit or limit in a number of ways, the number of recreational for-sale establishments. You know, this would sort of, in addition to giving time to, for the state to get itself together in terms of regulations, you know, the town can sort of have a conversation about if they want to go forward with any of those votes. And that's a, that's, that's a conversation beyond this table, but...
Julia, could you run out and let Bill know we're waiting for him? I can hear him out in the hall.
Sure.
Thanks.
Are you aware of actions by other towns?
I feel like every other day, a new town is trying to do, trying to do this. West Bridgewater, Andover, Ashland. The timelines are different. I forget what the, what the proposed, what the proposed date on this is. The dates in the act are, I think they're, they're supposed to have the regulations done by September to allow establishments to open in January of 2018. So, Bill, Bill can speak to sort of the timelines in this draft, if that's...
So move to medical marijuana, Bill, sorry you weren't here. The board seems generally supportive. We have questions about the differences in the drafts between this and...
Recreational marijuana.
This draft and medical, sorry, yes, we're talking about recreational. This and the, if there's any differences between this draft and medical that we should be calling out so that the board's aware of it, and what the timing is, those are sort of the points of clarification so that we can make a motion.
This particular version is for, just for recreational. This, we were very specific in our original medical marijuana, and our special permit would state medical marijuana. There are issues before the state right now that are going to potentially allow somebody who has a medical marijuana to open a recreational marijuana. They're first in line, because they're the ones who spent over $300,000 for an application with the state, so they get to go first. All this does is, it stops us by at least a year. There's two votes that are required within the community. The first one is for recreational, do we want it? The second one is, can you use it onsite, which, good luck getting through here, but that one isn't, doesn't happen until June 30th, 2019, so that gets pushed way out. The state is not going to have regulations until January of 18. Our vote wouldn't come until after June of 18.
Our vote, or our...
Our vote on a, on recreational, by using this moratorium.
So just for clarification, our typical town vote is in April. You're saying June would be a special vote, or is that just when the Attorney General would...
I pushed it that it couldn't happen before.
Before, okay, I understand, okay.
So you can push it to the September, yeah, September vote that we, we have a primary back in September.
Yeah, the, the language of the act pegs those referendums to state elections, so you wouldn't be able to do it in April for the town election, it would have to be for the state election.
But you, you need to know in June what you're voting for in September, plus the dates of June 18, June 19.
Okay.
And this holds us out that we have to wait for, till those dates. But there are two votes involved in it, so we would not have somebody applying to us for recreational before, at least after the vote of September 18.
September 18 or September 19?
18.
18, okay.
Use of it onsite.
Would be 19.
Would be 19.
Okay. All right.
So we are, the, the motion here would be that the planning board wishes to send this to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the warrant for the Maytown meeting?
Yes.
Is that right?
Why aren't the Selectmen doing it? Who wrote this thing?
I did, it's for zoning.
You did it for zoning? Where did you come up with, I mean, you, you impose all kinds of requirements on the planning board, we're going to be, we're going to be doing a lot of work if we have to do all this stuff.
Right. And right now, you are the special...
Is this what the statute says, get a moratorium, the planning board has to do all this stuff? Because, you know, if we tell the, the people this, what we're going to do, we've got to do it. Why can't, I mean, this is, we're going to undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts. I mean, how are we going to do that?
Is this a model zoning bylaw that you picked up from somewhere, or is this original?
It is, it's from, it's from a group of planners around the state, that it's from our listserv, it's different communities adding different pieces to it. There is a, there is a group that was meeting last Friday out in Worcester, and the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency is taking the lead on the recreational marijuana for the regional planning agencies, and all of these particular issues are in their same documentation. So it's, it's a completely evolving, changing all the time.
But there's nothing to...
Applying for the moratorium, it's, it's placing a, we're placing an article there to, to put the, put a moratorium in, in place. If you want to change the language as we move forward, that's fine.
The cannabis advisory board is a state board?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, eventually, you're saying we have to have a bylaw, a zoning bylaw that says you can, if we decide...
And it sounds like we have to have this, go ahead.
If the state says we need these, then...
And do we have to have the bylaw before the end of the moratorium?
Your moratorium comes after the state has come up with regulations, so the state is going to have regulations, you're going to have, what are you going to do with the state regulations?
The state regulations, again, give us that timeline again, they're going to have a regulation.
January of 18.
And then we're going to come up with a bylaw by, if we decide to advise that the town should have establishments.
We have to tell them something anyways, otherwise, if, if you do nothing...
So from January to June, we have to come up with something?
Yes. If you do nothing, you could be the same as...
And it has to be June of 18.
We need to have something in place before June of 18 to vote on.
In September.
Right after that.
I see where this says the town shall undertake a planning process. I don't see where it says the planning board has to do it. Did I miss it in here?
No, it says the town.
Well, who is, who's going to do it?
Don't you think you're going to get a lot of input from the state?
Yes.
To start drawing bylaws around?
You definitely are.
I mean, you're not going to stop from scratch, you're going to get...
We can't even get a signed bylaw ready.
I would think impacts could come from the health department, the Board of Health, rather. You know, there would be...
If you vote, you don't vote, you get to do with what the state has. I mean, there are some communities out there that didn't do anything for medical marijuana. Framingham. Framingham has no medical marijuana zoning bylaw, therefore, anybody can come in, apply to Framingham to put in a medical marijuana facility, several communities in the state. We put it in so that we could control where it goes. I mean, a woman stood up and said that we did it because the state forced us. No, we did it because we did not want to be forced into having to accept a medical marijuana facility in areas we didn't want it. We wanted to know where it was, where it could be controlled.
This is very similar to the adult entertainment.
Yes. Do something, or you can get it anywhere.
So the question I have is on timing, because it says our moratorium will be in effect through June 30th of 2018, so wouldn't we, or 2019, so wouldn't we have until then to produce a bylaw? And not June of 18?
I think there's a second, there's a second piece to this.
If John Flynn said this is good?
John Flynn has had it and hasn't said anything about it.
Maybe John Flynn should say something about it. I mean, we do, he is the town council, and he is supposed to address questions that boards have.
And it, it, yep. First, the town must vote by ballot to determine whether to issue licenses for recreational by ballot that cannot occur prior to November 6th, 2018, the next biennial state election. So yes, you're, you're actually...
Should be 18, right? June 30th to 18?
No, because if we decide not to issue licenses, why do we need to have a bylaw at all?
Because then after the moratorium expires, then we're, it's a free game anyway.
I see, I see.
The state said yes.
I understand.
We said no, the state said yes. Under the medical marijuana, the state voted 59% in affirmative, the town voted 63% in affirmative. This time, the state said yes, and the town said no.
So we've already had the first election?
Had the first election.
Now, that was the part I was missing.
I don't, I don't know if that's actually...
That wasn't the first election, that was just, we now have to, we have to develop rules as we move forward if recreational is coming here. But we can't vote on something that we don't know.
You're confusing us because you keep saying if recreational is coming here, if it's...
We don't know what the rules are going to be from the state. Are they going to, are they going to allow a, if we take a medical marijuana, do we have to take a recreational? We would write our rules and say no.
Okay.
This is the issue we had with medical marijuana.
They could just say, yes, you have to take it.
Because we didn't have the regs from the state yet, so we said moratorium until we get the regs.
Got it.
And this is sort of the same idea here.
Yes.
Fine.
But I'm back to you. I thought it was a good question, if the regulations for the state are coming in January of 18.
Right.
Why do we have a moratorium till January, June of 19?
It's going to take us that long to write our regs?
A year and a half?
So then we don't need to have regs in place by June of 18, which is what I think somebody said earlier. It would be June of 19.
19.
That makes me feel better.
The state allows on a...
Six months.
The state allows, when things are legal, for a town just to take up a moratorium?
If the town voted no, and the town voted no.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I think that's the point, we're kind of guessing, right? We don't know.
The town, the town did vote no.
No, no, I'm saying we're guessing on whether the state's going to allow us to adhere to this moratorium.
Recreational.
They haven't answered that question.
Either way, I mean, I, my feeling is that I think a moratorium makes a lot of sense, I strongly support it. I would like to see, when it speaks of the town undertaking this planning process, that we define who the town is.
And to, to that point, I would also suggest that maybe we consider putting in or modifying this language to include the recommendation to form a subcommittee to review the guidelines and present to, whether it's the planning board or the Board of Selectmen, what their findings are.
With inclusion of the planning, of the Board of Health.
Fine, but I think there should be a recommendation that there be a subcommittee appointed by the Board of Selectmen or by the town moderator as part of this moratorium, because I, I think, otherwise, it's... Because I, I think, otherwise it's a little vague as to who's gonna have to do the work.
Or a committee.
Fine, you're right, you're right, a committee is right.
Or what about whether it be staff? I mean, the town administrator who has to take the lead on it?
It's fine, I think there needs to be some clarity, because I don't want it to necessarily fall on our lap.
It should work with Bill, it should work with the Board of Health, right?
Can we put that in our recommendation?
That's, I think, what we're asking to do.
Yes.
So that goes in, doesn't go into the language, it goes into the recommendation, is that what you're saying?
What you're saying, but your committee would be our recommendation. The recommendation on the planning board is that a committee be set up of Planning Board, Selectmen, and Board of Health.
And probably a couple of public citizens and the new town administrator and, right.
Yes.
Yes.
And that gives a powerful recommendation.
Great, how do we get that in there? Do we need to propose language right now, because this is due to.
We're gonna have a public hearing on this after, in.
So we can just modify our recommendation at that time?
It's going to be our recommendation.
Fine.
This is the article, that's the recommendation.
Fine, so we don't have to modify the article?
I think we should, I think we should take out that planning process to address the potential impacts of recreational marijuana in the town, because I think that that is going to be an extremely difficult process.
Isn't, isn't that what you're talking about, that subcommittee doing?
Yes.
I guess the question whether it's really a planning process or if it's really just a review process. Because planning, I agree with what Alex is saying, planning connotates planning.
I agree with that. I agree with that, that's what I'm trying to be more definitive in it.
Yeah, I, I agreed when you said it didn't say planning board, but the more I read it, if the town's gonna do planning, who's gonna do the planning?
Capital P or under R K P.
Put in the Board of Health will do it.
Right, sounds good.
But even beyond that, I think we need to specify the citing of recreational marijuana and not just the impacts of recreational marijuana, because how the heck do we know? None of us are physicians. It should be the citing of recreational marijuana uses in the town of Milton.
So the fourth line down, take out town and put in, Town of Milton's Cannabis Committee.
We have to create one somewhere, right?
Fourth line under where it says the moratorium, that town, take that one out and put in.
Town shall establish.
During the moratorium.
But that will apply to everything then, going on.
Relative to marijuana, yeah.
I mean, it will do the planning process, it'll consider the regulations.
No, no, I think we have to further adjust that whole sentence, but I think that's probably the right place to say we're gonna create an advisory committee of some sort.
If there is one, I'd, I'd put it in, to do the advisory stuff.
To consider the potential impacts of citing recreational marijuana in the town of Milton, recreational marijuana uses.
The town shall form a cannabis committee to undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of recreational in the town.
That's what I mean, it has to say the citing of recreational marijuana uses, not just the impacts of recreational marijuana. Because we're talking about the citing of a facility, we're not talking about what happens when you smoke pot.
The citing of and the potential impacts.
Citing and use. I mean.
Yep.
Citing and use of recreational marijuana, that sounds good.
Yeah, because it's more than a planning process, it's a different kind of impact process.
Whatever it is, I don't want to do it.
Alex is not going to be on this committee, I don't think. And who's gonna form the committee for us? And the, should we, as the town, we, we say the town, but should be the town administrator? Should be the Board of Health, should it be the Board of Selectmen that establishes this committee?
Board of Selectmen usually establish the committees.
Point, appoint people.
That's great, I think that's the right, so we should say the Board of Selectmen. They've been putting enough off to us lately.
And then we can leave it open and they can decide who should be on it. Right, we don't have to necessarily define exactly.
We're changing, the, changing the town that's highlighted currently to the Board of Selectmen shall undertake a, can we change it to process as opposed to planning process?
Yeah, take out the word planning.
Process.
A review process.
Right.
Great. To address the citing and use of.
Well, I think impacts is good, but need to add citing, right.
Citing, yeah, to address the potential impacts of citing recreational marijuana uses.
About citing, use, and potential impacts.
Yeah, go back to what April said was good.
The, the, so, go, go back.
Citing, comma, use, comma, and potential impacts, I like that.
Okay.
That's fine.
So, let me, can I, if I can insert something in here?
You can try.
The zoning that the planning board can create regards recreational marijuana establishments. No matter what, people can grow plants, they're, they're doing it right now. They can possess it on their person, they can have it in their house, they can use it in their house. So I think, the, the reason I put recreational marijuana establishments in the town is because that's what the town now has control over.
Right, that makes sense.
So when we talk about, when, when, when we go into use.
Citing, yeah, just citing.
Maybe onsite use.
Citing, onsite use, yeah.
I think I agree with Tim.
Yeah.
To address the citing and potential impacts of recreation, or, so I would go back to saying, to address.
The establishments.
The potential impacts of citing recreational marijuana establishments in the town.
That's, impacts of citing, I think that makes sense.
I don't agree with you. Because I think the board needs to discuss two things. One is the potential of, of recreational marijuana facilities on the town, potential impacts. The second is where are you gonna put them? It's two separate things. I mean, yes, I agree with you, there's gonna be potential impacts of the citing, but we also have to figure out where we're gonna cite them. So we can't just talk about the impacts of the citing, we have to talk about how to cite them, because otherwise we're gonna, we have, to Bill's point, we have to cite them somewhere or they're allowed everywhere.
Do we have to cite them?
We can prohibit them, I thought.
If the town votes to prohibit them, then we don't.
Well, so, I mean, this sort of implies that we're going to, we're going to cite them.
Right, so then I agree, now I agree with you again.
Well, that's why I wanted to say the potential impacts of citing.
No, now I agree with you again, because I was, yep, that's fine.
Because we, there could be no impacts if we choose not to cite them.
Choose not to cite, right.
I, I get confused, and this came up before, when people keep saying you can put them anywhere. If it's a commercial business, you can't just put it anywhere.
Not if the legislature says that you can prohibit them.
Well, no, no, I, beyond prohibiting, if you say we're gonna allow them, that doesn't, that doesn't, without a bylaw, it just, doesn't give them a right to put it anywhere.
Certain things are allowed to go no matter what your zoning is, like daycare facilities, churches, what else?
Is that how adult entertainment works, or is that only allowable in a, in a business district?
You can put them anywhere.
So there's.
You can vote to put them in a certain, certain district.
But if you don't, if the municipality takes no action.
Then they can go anywhere.
Literally anywhere, in a residential district as well?
My neighbor can have one out of his house, when people come up to his house park in front of his house park.
We've identified a district where they can be cited.
Well, what if I have a, a pre-existing non-conforming facility and I'm now trying to take a place it into that? It's not that you're going to, but.
Even a pre-existing non-conforming facility has to.
You have the opportunity.
It's the Board of Appeal, doesn't it?
Unless you get a special permit, a pre-existing non-conforming use has to have, be a very similar use, so you need the special permit.
I think, I think the point of the moratorium is to.
Bring up all these issues.
Yeah.
No, the moratorium is fine, I just, I just don't understand why people give, saying things, you can put things anywhere. You can't put, you can't put a business anywhere, you gotta put it in a business district.
Well, this will alleviate us needing to worry about it.
They're not giving away this recreational marijuana, they're selling it as a commercial business.
Well, unless they grow it themselves.
They're selling it, they're still a business. I grow coffee beans, if I have a coffee shop, it's still a business.
Okay, motion?
To do what?
We have to.
To send this to the selectmen?
To send this to the selectmen, yeah.
To put on the warrant? And change at their, at their discretion?
Yeah, let's read it carefully when it comes back out again.
Read, read it, yeah, read, read this carefully before you just slap it on the warrants.
Do you wanna make some changes to the?
We just did, right?
We just did.
I mean, the wording's important, but most important is you have to have a moratorium until the state tells you what guidelines you work with.
We're gonna get a second bite at this anyway in a public hearing.
What we've done is given this baby to the selectmen and we don't even do the zoning. Oh, by the way, zoning bylaw is zoning bylaws, plural. I actually opened it up so you could take a look. It's plural.
Third line, third, third from the bottom. Zoning by laws.
You wanna put the planning board anywhere in there? Okay, that.
I don't.
Nope.
No, okay.
They'll, they'll bring us in.
Boy.
They'll take us right back in.
Well, eventually, if the people say it's, we're gonna have them, then it has to be a bylaw and there's.
We'll see them again.
This is good government.
Yes. All right, I needed that motion so we can move along here.
Oh.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
It was April.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Back to the A and R for twelve fifty-nine Brushhill Road. Please. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Mary Ann McCattrick. I represent the application, applicants for this continued discussion of the A and R application at twelve fifty-nine Brushhill Road. We did file a new application for a four lot rather than the five lot plan, which the board received before their last hearing before this one. And so, at that time, I submitted a memorandum to the board, well, last week, on the fourteenth, pretty much summarizing all of the testimony that we provided to date, the questions that we've answered, and kind of drawing your attention to some of the prior memoranda that have been submitted, as you have received a lot of material on this application. And I certainly had that memo before with me tonight. I thought I might start with a briefer summary, because I don't know what the board may have questions about. I don't want to take an extraordinary amount of time if you review the memo. But if you do want me to go over in more detail what I provided last week, I'll be happy to do that. So if you'd like, I'd start with my briefer summary. And first of all, just saying again, we have reduced the size of this application from five lots, four of them new lots, to three lots, three new lots and one existing lot. There is a house, the Scheller House already, on Hemman Way Drive, occupying this entire area. And the proposal is to subdivide the lots. And we've submitted an A and R application for particular reasons, not because it's the only way to apply for approval, but we feel that it preserves the essential, unique qualities of this area best, gives the residents the most control over what happens to this roadway in this section of Milton. And that's, so that's why it's being presented at this time as an A and R application. It will be the planning board's decision whether we, you want it to proceed that way, whether you feel that the roadway is adequate to reach the three new lots. So I believe that you should make a decision tonight, we've given you a lot of information. There has been a certain amount of repetition, I think, of the issues, and you probably hope are ready, or will be ready. I think that decision should be based on, first of all, whether the existing private way is adequate to access the three new lots. The subdivision control law requires that you look at the way to the new lots. So only to the, to the lot line for the three new lots. That's the area that you have to examine here to decide whether it's, the way is adequate, the private way. A second factor that you need to consider is that the first lot, while, has frontage on both Brushhill Road and Hemman Way Drive, it's right at the corner. I don't know if it's legal frontage, there's a question, and it, it's not really relevant. In other words, this, this lot does have, or would have, conforming frontage on Hemman Way Drive, and that's how we're presenting it to you. But it is on Brushhill Road, it's not further in on the driveway. So there are only two new lots being proposed that are further in on the driveway. This private way, at a, at a width of forty feet, is wider than many of Milton's more than eighty-one private ways. And I think there is a misunderstanding, because we, we asked the planning director, the board asked us to get a list of private ways, the planning director provided one from the DPW. I have it with me tonight. The, the dimensions of the private ways on that list are right-of-way widths, they are not pavement widths. So the pavement width this way and the right-of-way width are two very different things. This right-of-way at forty feet is comparable to some of the larger right-of-ways in Milton, right, private ways in Milton. List isn't comprehensive, it doesn't include this private way. It also doesn't include Avenue A, next door. But it, it's, there were eighty-one on that list. Some of them were formed as a result of subdivision approvals, and they're, they're wider, they're recent, and they're, they're subject to subdivision rules and, and controls. Some of them are old ways similar to this one. So if, if the only issue were that, this private way is very comparable to the, to the larger, wider private ways in Milton. The grade in construction of the road is within subdivision standards. And, you know, we have a detailed analysis of this, it's been provided by the engineer, by David Crispin, who's here tonight. So I'm not gonna go into all of the reasons, but you have a whole memorandum on that explaining why he feels that so. The issue is the pavement width, the pavement width is different from subdivision standards. And that's because the whole length of Hemman Way Drive in both Milton and Canton is designed as a limited access private way. It's only for access at the present time to thirteen houses, and if you were to permit this application, it would be for access to sixteen houses. And the only part of the way that we need be concerned about for this application is the part of the way that's in Milton. It's an almost level roadway, it has a forty-foot right-of-way, it has twelve-foot pavement, and, you know, issues that have been raised about drainage and so forth, I'll address shortly in my remarks, will be improved with three more homes that will be tasked with the responsibility of maintaining the drainage properly. Since nineteen eighty-one, when the Schellers constructed their home on this private way, they've had access back and forth to Brushhill Road in all seasons with their vehicles, their invitees, garbage trucks, fire trucks, and delivery vehicles, as well as construction vehicles. And they have not had a problem accessing their lot. Their lot is on the inside edge of this area. So this is a, this is proof that we're offering that this is an accessible roadway. The existing private way is adequate for the installation of municipal utilities. That's the second prong of what you have to decide, to decide whether an A and R plan has sufficient access. It's not that private utilities, I mean, public utilities have to be installed in the way, although if they were in the way, you could point to the fact that they've already been installed. You have to show that, that the way is adequate to install them. And a forty-foot width private way, right-of-way, is clearly adequate. You only require fifty feet for a subdivision. So, you know, you can certainly put municipal utilities in here. The two lots that are closer to Brushhill Road will have to have public water and public sewer because of the rules applying to those connections. Do the applicants have a deed at easement to use the way? Do they have the right to use it? We provided, I think, ample evidence showing that. And finally, is there, are there any legal obstructions to subdividing the applicant's existing lot? And we've given you two legal opinions, from two, two different attorneys, one of them myself, saying that there are no legal obstructions to subdividing at this time. Quickly, to summarize. We've applied for approval of an A and R plan rather than a subdivision plan. And that was especially to reassure others with the right to use the private way that the applicant's intention is to maintain the way in front of the lots in its current configuration. This is to preserve the historic design, the rural appearance, and the slow speed of traffic on Hemman Way Drive. The applicants will, as they must, be further limited as to development design by all environmental laws and regulations applying to the proposed lots. Each new home will have a driveway turnout designed to allow vehicles, including large trucks, to turn off the road when necessary, just as the Scheller home does now. Now, you took a site walk here and you saw that the Scheller home has a circular driveway. And it's a, it's adequate for a fire truck to turn around, and it has been used that way. The four homes in Milton on Hemman Way Drive will be responsible for keeping culverts and. and drainage channels clear and in good working order, and they will be responsible for maintaining the roadway in a safe condition in front of their homes. This will reduce the maintenance burden on others with easements to use this roadway. In addition, the three new homes will provide three more contributions toward the cost of maintenance, including snow plowing, now provided by all those with deeded easements to use Hemmenway Drive. And finally, the proposed development density is the same as the existing development density in the Canton portion of Hemmenway Drive. So for all of these reasons, we feel that this is a reasonable application for an A and R approval, but we're presenting it to you this way because we thought that this did more to, to preserve and protect this roadway, from our standpoint, than necessarily would be provided by a subdivision application, where more changes to the roadway could be required. We could apply through a subdivision process, and we expect to do so if you're not comfortable with this A and R application and you deny it. Do you want to add some comments from an engineering standpoint?
Yes, good evening. That's the best way to do this. Dave Crispin with the BSC Group. I did get a chance to look at the Butters' letter from December 16th, which has 13 points mentioned in it. In my engineering and survey experience, having been licensed for the last 35 years and seen a few of these, I will just comment one sentence answers on, on each of these. They make a point that a private way is an issue. The subdivision control law says nothing about private or public ways. In fact, when you lay out a definitive subdivision, it's not a public way until it's accepted by the town. They make a comment that part of the project is in Canton. Well, there are no new lines being drawn in Canton, so I don't see that that is relevant. They mention that the pavement is only 12 feet wide. We've acknowledged that, you just heard from Marion relative to that quite a bit. They mention there are significant barriers to widening the drive. There's no proposal to widen the drive. They say it was built for 1912 vehicles. Well, in fact, this meets the slope grade requirements in construction for a 2016 vehicle. So I don't see how that's relevant. It's without established municipal services of water and sewer. Just heard Marion say, they don't have to be in the roadway existing. They comment that half of the ownership is owned by the state parkland. The fee is owned by the state parkland, the easement overrides the fee, so that is irrelevant. They say the whole area is entirely within environmental critical concern. That's absolutely acknowledged, we understand that, but it has nothing to do with the A and R process. They comment that it's encompassing priority habitats of endangered species. Well, that is true for Lot B, only Lot B. The rest of it is not in that habitat, so I do not see that as relevant to the A and R process. They comment that there's a 10-mile speed limit. I did not see posted 10 mile an hour speed limit signs in the Milton portion, perhaps there's some in Canton, but the Schellers can tell you, they drive pretty slow, and most people drive pretty slow. They want people to go slow, too. The narrower the roadway, the slower you go. So I don't see that that's relatively relevant. They comment that frequently the roadway is obstructed by falling trees or overflowing streams. My observation is trees fall down and go across roads. Typically, they are higher than the street is wide. Your subdivision regulations require street trees. So in the same vein, your street tree requirements and the subdivision regulations have the potential to block a road if a tree falls down. So I really don't see that as relevant. There's a maintenance issue there, but that's not an A and R issue. The overflowing stream, acknowledging that that does perhaps happen from time to time, it doesn't seem to have been historically an issue until now, and I would think with the development of two or three new lots there, that that could be corrected. It would require permitting, obviously, with conservation, but I don't see it as an A and R issue. They comment that it becomes a one-way. You just heard Marion mention that the Schellers have driven back and forth all times of the year. That was a surprise to us when we met a couple of weeks ago. Those are my, you know, very short comments to the information that was submitted by the Butters, and I apologize, I have family in for the holidays, and I, but I do have notes for you that you can keep with those 11 to 12 comments. You can have the original.
That's it?
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Questions from the Board? I'm going to briefly open this up for the public for any new testimony, if there is any. We'd prefer that, again, just like last time, if we can keep it to new testimony, we'd appreciate it. So is there anyone here that would like to speak to this application? Sir, come forward, please.
Good evening, Wins Swenson, 65 Green Street, Milton. I'm also a resident of Hemmenway Drive. I, we are going to be very brief tonight. In fact, I think I am going to speak on behalf of all the residents who are here tonight, but if, with your permission, I'd just like them to raise their hand, the neighbors who are here to oppose the application for an endorsement of an A and R at this site. As the engineer, Mr. Crispin, and Marion both indicated, you got a letter from several people, notably the three co-presidents of the Hemmenway Drive Association. This is the committee that is defined in the covenant that provides for the governance of the drive. And the letter was also signed by an attorney, Carl Cummings, who lives on Drive, and by Denny Swenson, who is well-known to me, and I think to you, who is the president of the Friends of Hemmenway Woods, a not-for-profit that seeks to maintain the ecology and integrity and history of the, of the drive. It is our position, and I think it's important to note, that the three co-presidents do in fact speak for the residents of the drive, and I think with one exception, and that, of course, is the applicant for the endorsement. We would, it is our conclusion that Hemmenway Drive is not adequate within the town's regulation as a street. We think that providing an A and R in this case would be unprecedented, and we are asking that the Board so find that Hemmenway Drive is inadequate. I would just, I'm not going to kind of go tit-for-tat with Mr. Crispin. I will say that, on a number of occasions where he cites his 35 years of experience, and he says it was news to us that the drive was closed in the winter, there are a number of things that he's relying on, you know, that, that he's stating that don't particularly relate to his letter, his area of expertise. But what we believe is, in total, if you look at all of the factors, that granting an A and R in this case would be unprecedented, there's really nothing like it in the town. And it isn't one by one, point by point, it is the accumulation of all of these points that we think make for that unprecedented situation. So it is a private way. It is partly in another town, Canton. It is extremely narrow, it, it is, it is narrower to the point that two cars can't pass at the same time, with four-inch drops on the shoulders in many cases. It is narrower than the 81 private ways as listed. It does occur to me, and again, I'm going to try not to do this, that Ms. McCadrick, sort of, on the one hand, she says, but it's 40 feet, and on the other hand, the engineer and Ms. McCadrick said, but we have no intention of widening it. It's 12 feet on average, according to the engineer's figures. It was built to drive a driveway grade in 1912. A recent excavation of a portion of the drive, and this is noted in the letter from the three co-presidents, indicates that in portions of the drive that were excavated, the pavement is one inch deep with minimal stone underlaying. It was established without municipal services or water or sewer, unlike the Pope case. It is half-owned by the state, and the half-ownership is in protected state land. We don't think that's an insignificant issue, we think that's quite a, a serious issue that is not being addressed. It is wholly located within an area of critical environmental concern. It encompasses priority, priority habitats, and while it's true that only Lot B encompasses a priority habitat, there are other species, protected state-listed species, that are resident in other parts of, of the drive. It does have a posted speed limit of 10 miles an hour, and if, for all those who attend the association meetings, it, it is a topic that comes up, neighbors are reminded to remind their guests, and to remind themselves not to drive in excess of 10 miles per hour. So it's not only posted, it's not only one part of the drive, it's the whole drive, and everybody in the drive knows it. It is frequently obstructed by fallen trees. This isn't just, you know, a normal subdivision with a few nice stacked maples, this is a forest that hasn't been clear-cut with ancient trees that fall down just about with every storm. It has an overflowing stream, and I, it certainly is a constant problem, and you can see from the constant repairing of the drive, that turns into sheer ice in the winter. The drive does become one-way in the winter, and the regulation that's established by the Hemmenway Drive residents is that the traffic can only flow out to Brushhill, not the other way. Why? Because in storms, and after an accumulation of storm, snowstorms, we cannot provide for two-lane traffic, so we only can have traffic flowing in one direction. That one-way flow also occurs in the springtime, when, because of the movement of primarily amphibians, frogs, and salamanders from much of the upland property that the Schellers own, across the drive to Fall Meadow to spawn, we close the drive, coming in from Brushhill Drive to protect those species from getting killed by cars. And lastly, this is not a, a drive that is governed by state law. When the, when the Schellers assert, as they have through their, their advocates on, on a number of occasions, that they can sort of do whatever they want, it's simply not true. There is a governance document that they have agreed in their own writings to you, applies to them, and it says that there is a mechanism, a committee and a majority vote that regulates how the drive will be maintained, regulated, and so, those are my thoughts. I did want to actually just share one last thought, and that is that John Hemmenway died yesterday. He was the last, at age 90, he was the last resident, member of the Hemmenway family to live on Hemmenway Drive. And his family was, of course, the family that created Blue Hill Farm, that is the land that all of us now live on, and created the Hemmenway Drive that we are now arguing over. It would be presumptuous of me to tell you that we know what John Hemmenway would have said about this. In fact, ironically, his son was on his way up to Vermont to talk to John about all these issues. His son thought that he, his dad had a vision of the drive much like ours, and that's important to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Okay, thank you.
I would like to.
Okay, sir, come forward.
Something very quick.
Go identify yourself.
Randy Scott, 75 Hemmenway Drive, Canton. It's on the drive. We have land in Milton as well. It's called Green Street Rare on the map. I'm not sure what that refers to, but I'd like to just talk a little bit about the rare species that are in, in the area. Over the last several years, I was able to, with permission from our neighbors, go search for rare species. I'm a nature lover, I've, I'm a naturalist, and I specialize in rare species for the state, and not for the state, but for myself. I'm talking about state-listed species. And over the last three years, I was able to find four rare species just in our small neighborhood. There's a reason for that, I think, and that's because it's been kind of maintained the way it has been. It's been kind of a wild, open area for hundreds of years. And these species exist there because it's been pretty much unchanged for quite a long time. One of the rare species does use, they go through that property to migrate. It's a rare salamander that's listed. It's protected under state law. And so the other rare species could possibly exist there as well. They, two of them, I located two different, separate species within 800 feet of that property, and an endangered species within 2,000 feet of the property. And the property is very wet, and it's the proper environment and habitat for this, those very species that I found. So we don't know what's on that property. Those species actually could exist on those properties as well, and I know the salamanders do. We did find it on that property, on the drive. And that's pretty much all I have to say about it. I think there are probably, I would say, double that amount of rare species. It's, I would consider it a very dense cluster of rare species in a very small area. I think it's a very special area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so nobody else in the public? Okay, so, Board, we need a direct, we need to make a decision here this evening. I'd entertain either comments or a motion.
Could, we have either you, Mr. Chair, or Bill, go over what the law is in terms of what our responsibility is relative to making this determination? Because there are some things that are, I definitely respect people's concerns about, but I'm not sure that they are under our purview. So they may fall under the purview of the Conservation Commission, or they may fall into some process after an A and R or after a subdivision. So if it could be clearly explained, or reinforced, if you will, I guess, we've had lots of different things said about what is appropriate to consider here and what is not appropriate to consider here.
So, I can read to you a couple of things. Again, I'm going to look for clarification or correction from Alex if I make any errors. I do think it's, I can't resist reading one line from the introduction to the A and R handbook that we all have a copy of, and it says, "Perhaps no other aspect of the subdivision control law has caused more controversy and headaches at the local level than the concept of approval-not-required plans." So I just wanted to share that with the Board and the audience for the evening. The qualify, the, the approvals-not-required-plan section of the Massachusetts laws, Chapter 41, Subsection 81K to 81GG, which is the subdivision control law in the state, page 13, to summarize, says, "Basically, the court has interpreted the subdivision control law to impose three standards that must be met in order for lots shown on a plan to be entitled to an endorsement by the Planning Board that approval under the subdivision control law is not required. The Planning Board must determine whether, number one, all lots are but a qualified way, number two, all lots have adequate frontage, and three, vital access exists to each lot." And then it goes on to describe the following types of ways. One is, the three ways, one is a public way or way that the municipal clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way. The second is a way shown on a plan that has been previously approved in accordance with the subdivision control law. And the third is a way in existence when the subdivision control law took effect in the municipality having, in the opinion of the Planning Board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the lots. So at least from the standpoint of whether or not this way is qualified, I think number three is the one that this Board is considering. And again, it's, "In the opinion of the Planning Board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the lots." I believe that we've determined that all lots have adequate frontage on the way, if it's determined by the Planning Board to be a way, and vital access exists to each lot from the way. I think we've, I think we can conclude whether or not that, that exists here, but those are the three criteria. I think the one that's, the most in debate here tonight is number one, and again, of number one, the third criteria, which is, at the opinion of the Planning Board, it's sufficient. Did I miss anything?
No, that seemed, seemed fine.
Okay.
I'll offer my opinion, but I don't think that, it's in the definition of street in Section 1AC, the way in existence on February 10th, 1938, having, in the opinion of the Planning Board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land. And I don't think that this way- And I don't think that this way is adequate. I think that they've got to do a subdivision. And I will do whatever I can to minimize the width of the street to a reasonable width. But I don't think 12 feet, 14 feet. I think that probably I could go for 16 feet, but that would, we'd have to, we'd have to see. I, I just don't find that the way as it currently exists is adequate under the definition in our, in our zoning by law. So I'm going to vote to deny this plan.
Can I ask you to, like I've done many times, loan some of your experience here? If, I heard tonight said that the, the committee that more or less governs presently on the Hemingway Drive would have a jurisdiction to stop us from allowing them when they come here for a subdivision approval to widen the road to 16 feet?
They come here for subdivision approval, and if they have legal strategies in their back pocket, we're not going to decide that. We're not a court. We will decide if they own the land, they have a, there is a way, and they have rights on the way. I think that we would issue a subdivision approval, and it would be up to someone who did not agree to go to court.
So is the requirement based on the way as it is constructed as of the time of the application to us? Or is there opportunity for the people who own the property adjacent to that way to widen or otherwise improve that way?
They could, it's as it exists today that we are, we are, or when the applicant, possibly when the application was filed, but not tomorrow. I have the, the planning board in the past, at one point, approved an A and R on the condition that certain changes to the road be made. This was on Paradise Drive. And we said, "You get an A and R if the road is expanded in certain ways and in certain respects." And we've done that. So it is possible, but here we don't have, we don't have any sort of, I mean, the sub, it's sort of the same as the subdivision process, except, of course, there's a formal hearing required under the subdivision control law, whereas here it's a voluntary hearing.
Through that voluntary hearing, we've heard lots of testimony, though. If you call it testimony, but lots of comments, right?
We haven't gotten, we haven't addressed what would be adequate. We've addressed whether what is is adequate, not what would be adequate.
But the A and R, as I understand it, we, we're only being asked to, to say whether it is adequate, right?
Right.
We're not being asked to say it would be adequate if, right? That's not what we're being asked.
We're being asked whether it is adequate.
Not, not even in a dimensional sense. We're not here to say 11 feet is adequate, 12 feet is adequate.
Is it adequate or is it not adequate?
Is it just, and I'm going to ask, and I'm not being argumentative to your points and your stance that you're in right now, but how do you justify that it's inadequate for them to access lots when there's 13 lots presently using it to access their lots? And that the fire department says it's acceptable? How do, how do, how do you or anybody justify that?
I think that we can rely on, we have used roadways ourselves and are actually somewhat expert about roadways. And we can make a determination as to whether any particular roadway is adequate, especially since we deal in roadways all the time. And, but common sense is important to use, looking at what there is, how it compares with other streets, what our standards for streets in a subdivision might be, what sort of streets we've approved in subdivision. I mean, you can, you can draw on your experience here.
But there's also lots of legal experience, right? There's lots of case law on this, right?
Well, not.
I mean, that's what this whole document is, is case law, right?
Not exactly whether or not Hemingway, Hemingway Drive is unique. It's whether Hemingway Drive is adequate. And if, you know, if there were a case where we found such a street to be adequate for one, two, three, four houses, that would be relevant.
What makes it adequate? If, for example, if people can access their homes, if packages can be delivered, if workers can come, and if safety apparatus can access it, why is it not acceptable then in its current state?
Well, it certainly doesn't meet any sort of traffic standards that exist.
According to the engineer, it does, but so the standards.
But, you know, professional traffic studies, standards can be called on, too. I mean, we have never approved a subdivision 12 feet wide. If it's so adequate, maybe. Why didn't we? Why haven't we? Why did we say 18 feet is about as, as narrow as you can get and still provide for two-way traffic and without a center line? I mean, when you've got a car coming out and a car coming back, who has the right-of-way?
Well, we had a speaker at our last meeting say that the Canton Planning Director said that a minimum drive, in his view, would be 12 feet. Is that right, for safety purposes?
It's not what our minutes say.
So my notes had 12. There was no 12. There was a, okay, so my notes are wrong.
So a subdivision, though, typically deals with a street that isn't there yet, typically. So you're talking about new standards versus adequacy standards for a way that's been there since 1938?
So, if you may. So I've been down there three times, twice in the last seven days. I missed the sidewalk because I was in traffic in East Milton, which hopefully we'll talk about at some point in my career on the planning board. But, I mean, it was to this whole point of adequacy and what is, in my opinion, which is what the statute is asking me for, is this adequate? And I have a CRV. I don't have a huge car. And just my car fits on the road. There is no way another car can get by. As I'm driving up the road, and you can see it delineated here, there's a wetland on both sides of the road. So even if there's 40 feet right-of-way, I don't see how that road can be expanded without significant issues there. I mean, it's not something they can just go out and do as of right today. So in my opinion, I don't believe the roadway is adequate. So my vote is no as well.
When you said there's wetlands on either side, you mean it designated wetlands or just?
You can see it. It's designated here on the plan.
All right.
And you can see sitting water on both sides of the road, right off the road.
My only fear would be that the people that don't want it to happen are going to end up with a situation that may be more, more severe.
I understand that. I agree. But that's not what the statute is asking us to consider.
Nope, 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 absolutely not.
Can we have our town planner's opinion?
I think you just approved a lot down on Avenue A. It's narrower. The planning board approved the second lot by court on Avenue A. Again, it's still narrower. And it's in worse condition.
What lot was this?
Piper and Pope.
When were these approved?
Piper, a year and a half ago. Pope, two years ago.
It was the first thing we did when I showed up.
Pope was in Supreme Court, Superior Court.
1983.
Court killed me, this services were in place.
I would say that was an overturn of the planning board saying no.
I didn't hear you say services. There's been some discussion about services. Is that actually a requirement in that statute? Or whatever the A and R regulation is called? I don't recall seeing it in this handbook.
It said for the installation of municipal services to serve such land.
That it has to be adequate to accept the services?
To provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land and the buildings erected or to be erected thereon.
In Pope, they were in place, that was part of the court's reasoning for overturning the planning board's denial of the A and R. They said there are municipal services in place.
Somebody should repeat what he just said, if you weren't aware.
The message, the message was that in the Pope, in the Pope ruling by the court, it was because the services were already in place on the road, and that that was part of the decision by the court.
I mean, the services, they have access right off the Brush Hill Road. They can run the services across the land they own.
Right. So, I mean, at this point, we just have to take a vote. It's, we have two people that have expressed that they're not going to vote in favor of it, and we just need to go one way or the other, folks. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve it? If not, I will make a motion to deny it.
Okay, looks like they want you to make that motion, because I haven't heard anything else.
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of denying the A and R plan?
Aye.
All opposed? Opposed carries three to two. The A and R plan is denied.
And Tim, the denial simply says that the plan shows a subdivision.
It says what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
The denial says that the plan shows a subdivision.
Shows a subdivision. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you. Thank you.
Do I have to write that down somewhere? Go in the minutes?
I'll write it down.
I think I got it. I just thought.
We'll go in the minutes.
I think it's mine, here's.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess that's my, my decision now where we go. We'll go to the, I'm going to pull the room. I know people don't love when I do this, but I want to know who's here for Carberry? One, two, three, four, five. And who's here for Ice House? All right, it's even, so we'll go in the order of the, of the agenda, which is Carberry Estate Zoning, please.
I do have a document to distribute. It's up to you whether or not you want to read it, because we got it this week.
Yeah, Tim, why don't you introduce the hearing for us and tell us where we are? You can go ahead and start off, start us off anyway, and let us know where we are, so.
So where did this come, where did these edits come from? The, this is a document from, from the applicant, which is a redline comparison of the proposed great estate planned unit development zoning bylaw compared with the, I don't know what it's called, the St. Pius zoning on which it was modeled.
Just for clarification purposes, I actually mentioned to the applicant that I thought it would be helpful for him to take the basis of what he was using as his language, which was the Woodmere application, and redlined it for us. I don't believe there's any changes in what you submitted originally last week.
Right.
Okay, so this is just, you can rely on what he sent originally. This was just a, a tool for us to see how it changed against the zoning model that he used as a model. So that's what you're getting in front of you today, and that's why you didn't get it until this week. I didn't request it until, I think, Monday.
I think, like, Monday you requested it, and then Tuesday morning I did it, and I emailed it to Tim.
Yep.
And I, I'm pretty confident that it is strictly the St. Pius bylaw as enacted, redlined against the 12-2-16 draft that I submitted for the review by the board.
Thank you. Anything else from staff before we go to the applicant? All right, Mr. Corcoran, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a very quick couple of slides, because we've been before. You've seen, I think, the last, Tim, if you could just run through, just keep going. So, right there. So I think the last slide you saw was a plan that showed 64 units on site. It had three driveways, one main driveway in the middle, emergency access for each of the driveways on either side. After meeting with neighbors in October, we were asked to consider a reduction of lot units on the site. So the last plan was 64 units with 6, 58 market and six affordables. We're asked to consider whether we could reduce the, the actual number of units developed on the site by relocating in some fashion the six affordable units in another way. And so, in response to that and other concerns and issues that have been raised in a, in a number of different settings, we went back, we met with the Affordable Housing Trust, and understand from their perspective that they were supportive of the notion of relocating six affordables to other locations if they could be produced essentially at the same time as the units could be produced on site. So for every 10 units produced on site, one would have to be produced elsewhere. The question becomes where and how? But the latest draft of the bylaw would provide for that. Two, two issues arose in that conversation. One is, what is the goal of the town's affordable housing? There is, there are a lot of senior-related developments and senior-related affordable housing available in the town, but very little in terms of affordable units for young couples and young families. And the preference, I think, from the Affordable Trust would be to create affordables for younger families as opposed to six units for age 55 and over on the property. There are, so a couple of thoughts on how to get there. There are a number of single properties around town that are in some form of financial distress, either in some form of bank foreclosure, tax foreclosure by the town or otherwise, that could be acquired, refurbished, and sold as individual affordable units. We know there's one on Laurel Road, there's one on Thatcher Street, there's one on Smith Road, there are a couple of others in the town that, that the town treasurer has identified as possible, so that if the, if the developer were to work with the town to identify, negotiate with banks, create the opportunity to acquire, they could be developed, and we wouldn't be putting six units in another neighborhood. We know that that would be a significant concern. Alternatively, if the town had land or other access to, to property where affordable units could be, could be developed, we could do that there. And a separate option that we built into the draft of the bylaw would be that a cash payment could be made to, in the, in the amount of the net cost of the development of a unit on the site. The, roughly speaking, unit costs about $400,000 to build, just the bricks and sticks associated with building the unit. The sale price today is essentially $192,000, so $210,000. The sale price today is essentially $192,000, so $210,000 net would be available. We could spend $400,000 on the, $210,000 would be available as a payment roughly to the Affordable Housing Trust. I know that that, probably the least popular approach, but you know, if you did five...
Clarify, is that $210,000 times six?
Times six, right. If you did it all by a payment, it'd be a million.
I understand, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying.
So creates a menu of options that are available that we think could be done. There's room in this plan to bring units back on. There are three singles in this plan, one to the left, two to the right. Those could become doubles if they had to. Possible to think about adding some doubles in locations within the existing layout. We wouldn't need to change the layout, we wouldn't need to extend the roadways. So that's a possible as well, but we're mindful of the specific request of substantial number of the neighbors to look at the gross reduction of units on site. And so we've done that in that regard. We have one other slide, which is, the next one, Tim, which, this would be if we could do a cluster under the town's conceptual cluster bylaw, you could produce 33 single-family house lots, approximately half to three-acre lots with houses developed substantially the way Carberry Lane is developed, and those houses are reflective of Carberry Lane, which is next door, that would preserve 35% of open space. We don't believe it's buildable, but that's what you could do, and we think if you compare, which is the next slide, it's night and day in terms of the impact, impact on direct to Butters, roadway, massing, et cetera. We think that the 58-unit cluster plan, excuse me, the December plan, is superior in every way to the cluster plan. So with that, we have presented to the planning board for consideration for the bylaw for town meeting. We met with a substantial number of the neighbors three weeks ago. We told them that we were moving forward to have, request the planning board put the bylaw before town meeting in May. We know that the planning board has to vote to put an article on the agenda for town meeting, so that we can then launch into a public hearing process and continued iterative process with the planning board, other town boards, and the neighborhood about how to, and whether we can further refine the plan as we advance towards town meeting. But we felt that we had reached a point where 58 units, market rate units, is the minimum number of units that we can feasibly build on this property, absent the ability of neighbors and/or other entities to purchase additional open space, and in so doing, purchase and buy down the unit count. We've had discussions with the neighbors about a couple of options to doing that. We've given them some, some numbers in terms of what it would cost to do that. To date, there's been no specific offer. They identified a source of capital that we could evaluate with respect to its credibility as to whether or not we could reduce the unit count further. We've talked about two approaches, one to do a clustered townhouse plan with 33 units, and one to reduce from 58 units to 44. In each case, we've given them a number, but we have reached a point where we think we need to move forward, and people, we have to begin to focus on what we think is realistic. And so we're asking the board to take the bylaw as we've presented it, vote to put it before the Selectment for Inclusion on the Town Meeting warrant. We understand that there would be continued work on that during the public hearing process, but we think we've reached a point where we have to, we have to begin to move that forward. And with that, I'll open it to your questions and other comments.
Who wants to go first?
I will. So all things considered, if I had it my way, the site wouldn't change a lick. I did an independent site tour, because my son's early first communion was the pre-arranged site tour, and it's just an absolutely beautiful parcel of land, and I'm sad to see it developed in any way above and beyond what it's developed today, but we have this thing called private property rights, so I understand, I understand why someone's coming forward with the project. I am very, very pleased to see the neighborhood buffer at 125 feet on both sides of the property. That was important to me. I think that in doing the site tour, there's been a lot of thought into reducing visual impacts from the road and from the neighborhood, and I was happy to learn about that. I would really like to hear Cheryl's feedback on the design standards for the building, especially as we're looking at this compared to the St. Pius article, it's identical. We've heard a couple of comments from the public about the visual impact of some of those buildings, at least the early construction being not quite adequate. So I'd be interested in hearing the feedback, but generally speaking, I would favor putting an article forward, reluctantly favor putting an article forward, but I would do so with the understanding that if we don't attempt to put something forward with the minimal impact, we could receive something much more significant, as we see here with the cluster design, and I would hate to see that happen.
Subdivision?
Yeah, the subdivision, I'm sorry, yeah, the subdivision.
I would say that I agree with April. I have, I served previously on a condominium working group, I think before, was a planning board member, where there were a number of people who were interested in this particular parcel and seeing the historic viewscapes of the, what you see from Canton Avenue as a, the landscape, and also the, some of the historic structures, including a former, former Governor Walcott's house, as being valuable historic assets, and it would be preferable to see those stay rather than be demolished. We have no regulations which would prohibit those from being demolished, and we have only really the subdivision regulation, which really, which controls how it could be developed. And I think that that, as a subdivision plan, would destroy what is, people value about that property. So finding a way to acknowledge that the property can be redeveloped in a way that tries to balance the needs of its redevelopment with preservation of historic landscapes, of historic structures, and providing increased access to the conservation land via, I think you didn't highlight that, but I think it is an important feature, you know, to get to the Blue Hills from here. So there's still a lot of things that I acknowledge would need to be reviewed going forward, many, many details, and the topography is significant, the land, the, the natural features are significant, and while I view the plan on the left as a diagram, I don't view it as a site plan, that there would be a lot of work that would need to be done and demonstrated to us how, how that site plan is really going to meld with the site, so that there's the least impact on natural resources, on stone walls, on view corridors, on topography, without, without significant cut and fill. And then, and I think it is doable, you know, given the number of units you are at, at this point, you know, when you had a higher number of units, I think it was going to be more challenging to do. So overall, that, now, in terms of building standards, I am concerned about a cookie-cutter kind of townhouse approach. I'm concerned about what we saw at Woodmere, which is the, the sort of overall garage door aesthetic, and if you're looking at these, those sort of three doubles that would face Canton Ave, you know, they, we wouldn't want those to be identical architecture, okay? So we would want to be, I think, pretty specific about what the restoration of the two historic houses would be, how, how much alteration would be required to convert those to condominium, and how much can they stay? And as far as the design standards themselves, I mean, there would, I think, and even, even for some of the, understanding the site plan, I think I've, I've said before that I think three-dimensional kind of material presented to us is critical, and I, I still think a three-dimensional model, renderings from multiple vantage points, detailed sections that would be required, so that underneath this site plan, I would like to add a lot more requirements for submission, and I suppose some of that could come through a process, but I'd like it to be out there from the beginning, that the expectation is going to be high in terms of demonstrating that that's a good plan. And it's also, instead of saying that materials should be of a high quality, I think we could, and I've seen before where certain types of materials are prohibited, so certain things like vinyl siding or things of that nature, so, or we might encourage the use of other kinds of materials that are compatible with his, with traditional historic materials, such as, you know, cedar siding, et cetera. So I think there could be some additional work on the, on the building standards. The other thing I was, you make reference to the open space, and I think there's, we will need some more work on what the characterization of that open space is and who has access to it. If this were a public street, the public would have the ability to walk through the property and, and be able to take advantage of the beautiful scenery. I'd like to see that that would be an opportunity for the public here, that the trails that might be in this property wouldn't be for the exclusive use of the residents of this property, because that part of a public benefit would include not just driving by it on Canton Ave. So those are my initial thoughts.
Mike, Alex?
One of my biggest concerns is still with the traffic and what the impact would be. I still think we need to have an independent traffic review.
We can make a provision for that.
I, I second that. I have deep concerns about the traffic, but I think we'll figure that out during the permitting process. I mean, if we can add it in here, I'm all for it.
I'd like to say that before permitting.
You'd like to see the traffic study before the permitting, but if it's not going to, yeah, it would happen as part of the permitting.
It impacts the way I'm going to vote?
Yes, it would, but you would know what the traffic would be before you voted.
On the project, right, not on the zoning.
Oh, I...
I think, I think it's impractical to think that someone would go through the effort to put, to conduct a traffic study without knowing if we're going to even change the zoning. So in that regard, I understand why we don't have it, but I do think that this, particularly the intersection just passed here, is crazy, and so I've...
This is part of the intersection.
Well, pretty much, right? At least the traffic queues back to here. So I'll be looking for that during the permitting process, and that will be a very serious point of consideration, but I think that's also, even if the zoning's in place, we can reject the project if the traffic, you know, study shows that this is going to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
It almost seems silly to me to create a zone, a zoning bylaw that is tailored to the specific site for the specific project, and then it hinges on the fact that if we get a traffic study, to reject the whole zoning bylaw we just wrote, tailor it specifically to the site.
Mike, do you, one of the things that we've talked about at the Master Plan Committee is sort of a larger townwide traffic analysis, because there are certain hotspots, if you will, and there's, obviously there's commuter traffic, et cetera. One of the things that we've talked about is, you know, if the town had a baseline traffic study, then what we would be looking for is developers to say how their development would change or impact that baseline. So I think one of the things that would be critical here to understand is that there's a baseline traffic issue already, and what we'd be looking for this analysis to do would be to see how this project would impact it, because I don't know that we can ask for one developer to correct traffic problems that are not being caused by their particular proposed project.
Absolutely not, but you already, you explained what the traffic plan is, to see what the hell this project will impact the traffic that presently exists, that you just, you made my point.
But one thing is, I guess what I'm saying is that if, if it's a solution that is really something that is a responsibility beyond this project, is what I'm saying.
You seem to be, you seem to be going a step beyond where I'm at. You seem to be telling me that if they discover that it's going to cause a problem, then they're going to tell us how they're going to correct the problem. I guess what I'm getting at is if I, if I'm shown that this is going to cause a significant problem, then I'm not going to allow it to become a significant problem.
I guess that my, my question was, were you looking, you said there's already a traffic problem here?
I'm not looking for a solution to a potential problem, I'm looking to eliminate a potential problem.
But I guess my question is, if you think there's already an existing problem, then would that, then you're saying you would preclude somebody from being able to do something with this property, because there's already a problem here? And my concern is that we can't put the problem generated elsewhere onto a, one project. I guess it's sort of philosophical.
No, no, but as we've said in many occasions here, if they can't demonstratably show that this is a benefit to the town to allow them to do something like this, then we shouldn't be allowing them to do it.
So my perspective is perhaps...
So if, if they're impacting the traffic that's already significantly poor, significantly more, then they're certainly not showing that it's demonstratably to be an improvement for the town.
Well, you could be asking for a mitigation, is that, if that's what you're saying, because generally, in my experience, has been that if a project's going to have some kind of impact, it, can that impact be mitigated? So either yes or no, and you can, we can judge whether that would be, whether that's easy to accomplish, but just because it has an impact doesn't mean it's going to be a negative if, if that impact can be mitigated.
So that's where, that's where I feel there could, there is reason to rezone, look at the traffic study, and then look at whatever potential solutions they might be developing if there is some impact, which I suspect there will be, and we already know there's a problem. And I almost, I think I disagree with you, Cheryl, in that if there's a problem, it's not really their project's responsibility to fix it. If they're going to impact their problem in any way, I think it is their responsibility to fix it, and I think that's how development works. The last guy in is stuck with the infrastructure improvement if they're going to have a negative impact.
But our job is to maintain the bylaws, and if we're asked to change the bylaws or create new bylaws, then it's our job to make sure in creating that new bylaw, it's in, it's in a positive impact on the town of Milton.
Which is exactly where I was going to conclude.
But if, but if Cheryl was to keep jumping to the conclusion that, well, then they can mitigate it, well, no, I don't want to create a problem to mitigate it.
So what I'm thinking, Mike, is they could potentially propose a solution that fixes our problem, makes it better than it is today. They could. I don't know if they will, but that's why we need...
Well, I'll go back to my original point.
An applicant to submit an application, right?
I can't see the reason to commit to such a bylaw that I'm waiting to hear answers, that I'm just going to limit the whole bylaw.
You'll never get an application for a project that might mitigate your existing problem unless you have a bylaw on which...
I'm not looking to mitigate the existing problem. I'm looking to not create a more severe problem.
I'm not sure we can, yeah, I mean, to your point, we can't figure out if it's going to be a more severe problem until they, until an application, until, until the traffic study is completed, but a traffic study costs, you know, $7,500,000. I don't think that's a legitimate expense on asking for a zoning modification.
I can't see the density of this development being demonstratably advantaged to the town of Milton in any sense.
Alex?
Well, I've got to say that at 58 units, I can, I can go for it. And I think that the idea of, of affordable housing, and, and you know, this is really, affordable housing is really workforce housing, and it's, it's people who earn $60,000, $70,000 a year who, who are been priced out of the market. I mean, town employees, a lot of town employees can't live here because they just can't live here, it's too expensive. So the idea of doing a, an ownership affordable housing program involving acqui, acquiring houses in different parts of town and selling them to moderate-income people, sounds to me like a pretty good... me like a pretty good, a pretty good program and getting the countdown to 58. I think this, I was concerned about the neighbor on the right, and I was concerned about the density, and I think that this is, this addresses, this addresses them both pretty And I think that if we agree to submit the zoning, it then is our zoning. I mean, what we would say is, here you are, this is a placeholder, and we're going to, in the next month or so, come up with something carrying what you say. I mean, I want it, I want the affordable housing piece to be tighter.
Right.
And I want to, what you see is what I want to get. In other words, the developer saying, this is what I think we'll come up with. I want to see something more or less as this. And it was not something else saying, well, we looked at it and it didn't work, so we changed it all around. I think that bait and switch. Don't want to see it. We want the zoning basically to guarantee the town. I mean, the town is going to be shown all this stuff at town meeting, and they're going to be said, this is a, this is a nice project, and that's what we want. I think that the reduction of six units does it for me, and I can, and I like the design. I think that it's, I think that it really does a nice job with the open space.
One of the things I'll add to Alex's comment about affordability, I do like the fact that by pulling it off of this site, it allows it to not be age-restricted, because I think that most of the affordable housing in town is age-restricted, and I would like to see some opportunity for that to not be age-restricted. So, that's an advantage, I think, of it being off-site.
Can I add an additional comment? I agree with both of those comments. I think it, there's, I think it's very desirable to think about taking dilapidated existing structures, reinvesting in them, and putting them back online as an affordable unit. I think that's beneficial to the neighborhood that they're in.
So, I have a couple of comments. I'll start with the affordability. So, you know, my, frankly, when I first read this, I was, in combination with the Pulte application, which actually also suggests it may locate the affordable housing off-site, far off-site, that was a real concern for me. I was really troubled by it, frankly, and really disappointed to see it, because I think part of creating appropriate and respectful affordable housing is that it's integrated into the community, not designated into certain neighborhoods. The way it was presented tonight made a lot of sense to me, because I agree with Cheryl that we don't really need more age-restricted affordable housing units. I think we are looking to try to create opportunities for people that work in our town, for teachers and...
Just, I'm confused. Why does this make it age-restricted if they have it at the site?
Specific requirement in here that it's age-restricted.
This is an age-restricted development?
Yes. So, you know, I, for me, it was a big, that was, the presentation of that made a lot of sense, but I would, all I, I would like to just say, I caution the town generally to be promoting that type of consent, because most of the time, our project should be incorporating the affordable housing into the development and creating integrated neighborhoods. But I will eliminate, or at least say that my concern has been alleviated based on the way it was presented, because I think it does make sense to have it outside of the age-restricted zone. I would like to see it done and either prior to or have very tight language requiring it to happen as part of the phasing here. And I'm not at all interested in the cash, even though it would come out to a relatively nice number. I think we need units at this point, and I think it's time that we start getting those units. Couple of other minor comments. One is, there's a reference in here to parking being allowed to be permeable. I understand that it's limited to the parking that would be made public for access to DCR property. I'd want to see that language a little bit tighter to know how many spaces we're talking about here, because I think if we're counting parking as open space, that's a slippery slope, and we should make sure that it's a pretty limited number that we're going to be doing that for. I agree, we should have a provision for traffic review as part of this, so that it's very clear that that will be a requirement of any development. We should probably look at doing that at most of our developments going forward.
Can we make that an independent review?
Well, I think certainly it would be, any review that we do in the town should be sponsored by the applicant and then peer-reviewed by a town's independently reviewed, for sure. I agree about the dwelling, the architectural guidelines. I'm not one to like to see a lot of design written into zoning, but I would like to reference some language about breaking up roof lines a little bit, based on the comments we've gotten on the Woodmere project. Just a general comment, I think it's a great project, and I think they've done, I think the applicant's done a lot of good work to try to meet the concerns that have been raised in the public process. I hope the public process has been successful and that people have come together and really talked about what they wanted and tried to meet in the middle somewhere. I'm not a real strong supporter of the planning board endorsing or putting forward this zoning, though. I'd frankly rather see us look at this zoning, say that we're very much in support of it in form, but have it come forward as a citizen's petition and then have us make comments on it and endorse it that way. Personally, I think the zoning's, this won't come as a surprise to anybody, but I think it's a little specific for the planning board to be putting forward. It feels like a PUD to me that in most communities, the applicant would put forward. So, I have to decide whether I can get behind a planning board-sponsored article, but generally speaking, I think it's a good project, and I think the language, especially since it was based in something town meeting approved, is a real good start and can be tweaked to get to where we need to be for May. So, those are my comments. I'm going to take, just one, two, three, and then we're going to go to the public. So, Cheryl?
No, I'll defer.
Alex?
If you put it in the hands of the citizens, changing it becomes a nightmare. You've got to, you've got to, you can't. I mean, it's not a placeholder. It's a citizen's petition, and you're stuck with it. We don't have to, at the end of the day, support this. I mean, we make it very clear that we're putting this on as a placeholder, and that in the next month or so, we are going to come up with the final article, final planning board article, and then we'll have a public hearing and determine whether or not we can support it, but we'll have put forward our best effort to write something that we feel is supportable by the public. And if we leave it in the hands, if it's a citizen's article, it basically, I guess, means that we have to wait until after our hearing and then come up with our own article, which may be outside of the scope. It just makes sense to make it a planning board article, and then we're in charge of it. It's our article, and we can, we can fashion it to do what we want it to do.
Can I ask a question about process? How much, so, let's, hypothetically, we vote to put something forward, and we decide we're going to do some more work on it. How much time do we have before the warrant is printed? Because I imagine we would want, whatever our recommendation is, to be in the warrant printed the way we suggest, as opposed to...
Late March.
Probably the end of January.
Yeah, I agree with that. You're going to make, you're going to have until late March to make your recommendation.
It goes to the printer in late March.
I understand. But the warrant committee is going to want a final article.
To review, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And my experience has been, and other town meeting members, I'm sure can attest to this, that there are the blue sheets and the pink sheets and the green sheets that come through a town meeting. It's not ideal, but if it were necessary to adjust it, to take into consideration other comments, you know, there is that opportunity still.
I personally would like to avoid that.
One of the things I'd like...
I think that's a nice ideal, but I think it's just that. I think it's an ideal, and I think it's, we'll see.
I mean, one of the things is that modifications could come from the warrant committee conversations themselves, so that sort of pushes it out a little bit, too. One of the things I'll say, just in response to what Alex said, is that, well, and what you said, Brian, while I generally am one who thinks that zoning should not be so specific that it's only for one project and one project alone, I find that this site is a very unique site, and that the alternative, even just that level of subdivision, is so unappealing. And I think, so, the opportunity to destroy the site, that I do think it's worth our effort as a planning board to try and get to something that's better.
Ms. Croker, and then we're going to go to the public.
Great. Just a couple of quick comments. One is, I, the request tonight is to put something onto the agenda for town meeting. Doesn't require your endorsement. It shouldn't be taken as your endorsement. There's work to do. We know it, and we look forward to working with the board, continuing to work with the neighborhood to refine the plan and the bylaw. With respect to the architectural issues, we spent no time on that. Of necessity, had to spend time on developing the plan, the unit count, and that's taken up a lot of effort. I know that Jack has brought on a different architect than the architects that's been used, and it's an architect that is particularly noted for historical sensitivity, and we look forward to presenting them and early and getting them involved in discussions about how buildings should be designed, variations, how they pay attention to the existing historic architecture. We've had that comment in meetings with the historical commission, that they're concerned that the new buildings relate to the buildings that would be retained, and how does that all want to work? So, those are my two additional comments, so, thank you.
Okay, we're going to hear from the public now, so I'll ask up anyone from the public to come forward. Cheryl, you're recognized.
My name's Ted Phillips. I live at 28 Hemlock Drive. Tonight, I'm representing the Blue Hills Neighborhood Association. We're a group of 50 or more residents all along Canton Avenue, Carberry Ave, Hemlock Drive, from 1776, which is the Blue Hills down almost to the Gastish on the corner of Blue Hill Parkway. Earlier this week, our president Hale Smith submitted a letter. I know Alex got it. I believe everybody else has it. I'm not going to, yeah, I'm not going to go through. I will address some of those points. My goal tonight, though, is to provide context to that memo, provide a little bit greater insight into the opinions, general sentiments, and specifics of the project that most concern our members. I loved your comment, because the neighbors, of course, would like to see absolutely nothing done to this property whatsoever, but recognize the unlikeliness of that happening. We're unanimous in our belief that a high-density housing development, as would most likely be developed under a 40B project, would be most inappropriate for this property and magnify all of the concerns with the current development proposal from Northland. Some of the initial reactions to Hale's memo have, were surprised us in that people thought we were, you know, absolutely against everything that Northland has proposed, so I just want to go on record with that. There are some aspects of Northland's proposal, excuse me, generally that we like. Just to mention a few of those, the retention of the manor lawn, retention of the KC farm field as the wide, green, open areas along Canton Avenue. We talked extensively about the retention of the stone wall along Canton Avenue and a no-touch buffer, which is currently set at 75 feet, and it's actually visible on the diagram on the left. I will mention, however, that it is nowhere in the bylaws that that buffer zone is there. It should be included. It does discuss a 125-foot no-build zone, but does not include the 75-foot no-touch zone. No-touch would leave the existing vegetation intact largely, except for, I think, all the stone walls, et cetera, et cetera. That's important to the neighborhood. We're very encouraged with the establishment of the no-build zone, which is the 200, 150 feet off the front, 125 feet off the sides. The bylaw currently states 60 feet off the back property line. In our meetings three or four weeks ago, given the current configuration, there was talk about Northland being willing to extend that, maybe not to a full 125 feet, but that's what the neighborhood would like to see. And we are very pleased with the retention of the historic buildings and to the dedication to keep the significant open space within the property. Okay, some of our concerns with the proposal and where we are with the project, no particular order, but you'll kind of pick up a theme. Density, the number of people, the number of cars added to the area, the increase in artificial light, just the change to the rhythm and feel of the area. Putting in this many new households, yes, lots of cars, more people. You're not going to look up from Canton Avenue and see the fields and the trees. There'll obviously be a lot of trees cutting down. You'll see a much different aspect come from Walcott Trail, which is up in the Blue Hills. Which would lead me to Viewscapes. Again, Canton Avenue is the way we enter into town. It kind of defines the town and the flavor. We're very much in favor of trying to leave that as is, or, you know, as nice as possible. We're also concerned about Walcott Trail, which goes up the right side and is a, one of the main walking paths in the Blue Hills area. And I will tell you, everybody I've met up there is saddened by this project. I hike up there four to five times a week. Hale is up there almost every day. I also do some biking up there, so we're back there a lot, and for whatever that weight that carries. Traffic, we've mentioned that already. We have been told, the neighborhood, that there has been some traffic studying done, not so much to relieve the issue, but to recognize the fact that the proposal, as currently written, wouldn't be any worse than any other proposals out there, in fact, marginally better, in that the negative impact wouldn't be as great as some of the other things that could happen. Drainage, there are lots of streams and underground rivers in that area of town, in this area of town. There is one on the plan that's labeled an intermittent stream. Convenient that it was in one of the worst droughts of all time here. But my understanding is there was a series of dams built back up in this property and behind, and up behind Carberry in the late 1800s, that actually were to control flooding in the Dollar Lane, Hemingway Pond area, coming off runoff from the Blue Hills. We'd be very interested, as we all live downhill, to ensure that we're not disrupting the drainage and causing problems for the neighborhood.
Bless you.
Trees, there are obviously lots and lots of trees. We've seen at the St. Pius site, most trees are gone. There are obviously some selected ones that were flagged and left in place, but from talking to neighbors in that area, far more trees disappeared than they anticipated. So, Northland has been rather responsive to some of these concerns. Very early in the process, they actually went down from 75 units to 64. That was very early in the process. From the 64, we're now talking 58. That's already been talked about. The neighborhood, as you would imagine, has gotten more supportive as the number of units have gone down. The bylaws I've drafted allow for 64, so be cognizant of that. It does not discuss whether that's post-affordability or after affordability. Northland has made the representation in the neighborhood that that 64 would be there only if the affordable units were on site. But the bylaws I've drafted, and I'm working off a draft of three weeks ago, so if something's changed, I apologize, but the 1.4 units per acre at 46 acres is 64 units. Northland also agreed or represented to the neighborhood that it would look to eliminate the triplexes that were in the 64-unit design. The neighborhood was really concerned about those. was really concerned about those. The bylaws, again, allow for 3,300-foot, square foot units, each unit being. You put three of those together, it's almost 10,000 square feet of living space in a single building. Multiply that by 20, you know, you get 20 10,000-foot buildings up there. That would be tragic, and that would get you to the 60. So, Northland represented to us as well that if the affordable units, or if we went to 58, I don't really care where the affordable units are, but if we go to 58, that would be, would allow the elimination of the triplexes. The bylaws allow for triplexes, as written. We would like specific language in there that says, if you're going to do 58, no triplexes. In the revising of the plan from 64 down to 58, a couple of things that Northland did that we like. Reduction of the number of units against Walcott Path. There used to be four buildings there, eight units, that ran right up near the path and very close to the Walker residence, which is there on the right. And they also reduced the number of units closest to Canton Avenue. Again, we appreciate that, and that was in direct response to some of the concerns of the neighborhood. They've agreed to redesign the main entrance. They're going to move the, or represented, they're going to move the entranceway away from, directly across from one of the neighbors, and move it so it's not right across from somebody's house, so the lights aren't shining in or creating problems. We appreciate that. And we very much appreciate kind of the original unfairness to the Walker property on the right, and they've kind of cleaned that up to some degree. I'm positive you'll hear more about that in a minute, so I'll keep going. In Hale's letter, we do mention serious, the fact that we have a serious, serious reservations about the 58-unit development. I've already mentioned some of those reservations, the fact that the bylaws currently call for 64, the bylaws allow for triplexes. We, the bylaws really don't discuss Walcott Path or Canton Avenue, kind of back to Alex's comment about you'd like to see the actual built project more or less look like this plan that's gotten sold. We're still very concerned about density, even at 58 units. We'd love to see less. We, as a group, have been pushing for as little as 33, not as a cluster development as depicted on the right side, but as 33 units designed much like the 58 units, just less of them. We do have, those discussions, I believe, are still ongoing, or, yes, they are ongoing. There is the wherewithal within the association to make it happen. We hope, or we look for the board to recognize that we'll continue those discussions, and something may come of it. The parties, the major parties involved have asked for some confidentiality, so I'm not going to talk a whole lot about it. But there is an effort to negotiate down the overall number of units.
Sir, I'm going to interrupt you just for one minute. We have
Yep.
Three other things to do tonight. We have public hearings coming up on this issue, so we are going to be able to talk about all these things in the public hearing, so I'm going to ask you to go as, a little bit more quickly, if you don't mind, so that we can wrap this up, okay?
Just a little bit about the Neighborhood Association. The majority of the members do agree with some sort of amendment. A little less than half would go with the 58, another 25 or 30 percent pick up with a reduced number below 58. There's a significant bit, maybe 25 percent, who are not in favor of any kind of zoning amendment whatsoever. You may hear from some of those later. I've already talked about some of the other changes. The last little nitpick is, the bylaws call for sheds and small accessory buildings to be out there, with no limitation as to the number or nature of those. We'd like to see in the bylaws some kind of limit on the number of ancillary extraneous little buildings up and around. We don't want every unit to have a shed sticking out the back. And those are, they're just my comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's helpful.
One question. The Neighborhood Association, when you were giving percentages, could you just say approximately how many members there are?
There's 50, 60, 70? 60. I think I was the last count, although I am treasurer. I should know exactly.
Is that 60 households or 60 individuals?
60 individuals.
And you don't have any sense of how many households?
Roughly 30, but it's a little more than that. There are some single individuals that are on there.
That's helpful. Thank you.
At one point, you said that it's been shown, I'm paraphrasing, it's been shown to you that the development has shown with the 58 units would be marginally better than what's allowed by bylaw?
It's been orally represented to us in the neighborhood meetings. The traffic studies were, no, I've seen nothing in writing. I've just been told that traffic will be, yeah, okay. I have not seen it. You did not represent anything, or I should have seen something?
You should have seen a traffic analysis that was done that compared.
We have prepared a traffic analysis that compares actual traffic counts at four other similarly situated locations, Quisset Brook, Home Inc., and two locations in Belmont, then an analysis comparison of the traffic numbers, gross numbers on a daily basis and peak hour traffic, compared to a 33-unit clustered single-family development. That was, that's been given to the board. It's been given, it's been given to the neighborhood.
Oh, I misunderstood, then. I thought you meant, it exists by bylaw today, which would be two-acre, single-family homes.
Well, we did it as compared to two acres as well, but, I mean, we're not doing it to acres.
It's part of the record. So we can review it as part of that.
We have that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kirk Connors. I represent the Walker family at 1776 Canton Avenue. They're part of the, I guess, 25 percent of parties that outright vote, you know, as part of the association that voted against this project. There are others that are not in favor of it, but trying to figure out if they can live with it. I did send a letter this week. I brought extra copies today, to the extent that someone may not have received or not had an opportunity to review it. I'll try and be brief, and I'll generally follow the letter. The first thing I want to do is try to decouple the town meeting from the proposal that's on the table. And we've got two different parts of the proposal. We've got the plan, which the bylaw doesn't bind Northland to in any way. We're looking at a plan, but that plan has nothing to do with what may come if this, you know, bylaw does pass. They're not connected. However, particularly since today's, December 22nd, we're about to go into two major holidays, I am here to ask that this not close this evening, that this is the beginning of a conversation, and I understand that Northland has been coming here since April. However, they just finalized that, that plan, which maybe isn't final, but that was recent, and the bylaw itself is quite recent. And those, you know, that could have been out there a long time earlier. So, for the people who are on holiday break and can't be here tonight, and I know there are some of them, including my client, Mr. Walker, and I think you guys know that if he had a chance to comment on this project, he would, and he is unfortunately out of state and was planning to fly back here tonight, but was unable to. But I would still reserve the right for him to comment and for, you know, other people that I know are not able to be here this evening.
Sir, I just want to address that one point real quickly, and I referenced a little bit ago, as did Mr. Whiteside. This is sort of a placeholder. This is not a public hearing. We're sort of allowing people to speak, so we have the input. But the public hearing of the, of the actual zoning article would be in January or February, so we will absolutely have.
No, I respect that.
You understand that. I know you understand that. I'm saying it for the general audience.
Sure. You know, one of the concerns, I'm sorry, Mr. Whiteside, did you have something?
Well, my feeling was a little different, that we would take the placeholder, we'd work with it at our meeting, sort of outside of a public hearing, hear from the people, come up with a final thing to, a final draft to advertise, and then have a public hearing on the final, but in January, do some work on matters such as you're suggesting, and then the article that would go to a public hearing would be what was determined after those discussions.
So, I understand that there will be more opportunity. The concern I have is that the bylaw as written essentially approves exactly what they've already designed. You know, well, I'll stay in the order of the letter, just to make sure I don't forget anything. Again, we can decouple town meeting from the review of this. As the chair has noted, they have the ability to go forward with a 10-citizen petition. That's what they should do, and then the board will have the time to talk and assess whether to support this when it does go to town meeting. And I understand Mr. Whiteside has some concerns that maybe you lose a little bit of control, but I don't think we're at a point, especially on night number one of discussing the language and the new plan, for the board to say that they're in favor of this, and that is the perception in bringing this forward and being the first party to put it out there. So, we would ask that let Northland go ahead and do it. They've certainly had enough time. I'm sure they can find 10 people, and they'll make January 5th. We have a few concerns about compliance with the zoning statute itself. As I've written in the letter, they put it forward as a PUD. We believe that under Chapter 48, that the cluster subdivision is the more appropriate and maybe the only way to proceed for what they want to do. That a PUD is a mixed use, and typically it's mixed use meaning commercial and residential, not meaning residential and some open land. That's exactly what a cluster subdivision under Chapter 48 deals with. The reason that we're concerned that they're going for a PUD, and I understand it's happened at least once before in town, is that the requirements under a cluster subdivision, particularly in terms of the open land, are more stringent, and that by going a PUD route, they're avoiding that and kind of rewriting the rules for themselves. There's no question in our mind that this constitutes spot zoning. If you read the bylaw as drafted, it is so clear, I think someone even said it, that it can't apply to any other parcel in town. You've got, you've got to be on DCR property, you've got the 46 acres, you've got so many components of this, that this isn't a bylaw change for the town. This is a bylaw change to approve this project, and I think that's very clear. It jumps off the page at you. I do, in addition to what's in the papers, maybe more for Mr. Whiteside, but for everyone, I have identified a number of cases that deal with spot zoning and have found spot zoning, and I've, some of those include situations that involve rural residential, exactly what we're dealing with here. And in those cases, they've said, you know, if you've got an area and it's rural, and it's been used for his, you know, historic purposes, conservation purposes, farming purposes. In my client's case, he has horses, but certainly he developed in this area for a big property with room for animals. You can't just upend that existing use that's been there for decades, just to put in something new, that there's a respect for what's been there a long time, and that there's no purpose served by a change in use. There's no need to change that use, that you would need to have, basically, the neighborhood in a transition, and there is no transition here. That property, as you know, has the five historic homes, has been preserved for a long time. In terms of the setbacks, I'm not sure if we've touched on it, that, you know, we show all the lines, and it looks good, that it's 125 feet here and, you know, other different pieces. However, those setbacks are strictly to buildings. They have nothing to do with any other elements of this project, so utility runs, pretty much even a shed, I mean, almost anything else could be put in those setbacks. And that's one of the things that if this weren't outright rejected, that we would certainly want to see tightened up in any final bylaw that would go to town meeting. And we haven't really talked about it tonight, but at the, at the Neighborhood Association meeting a few weeks ago, one of the gentlemen there, I think it might have been Mr. Ellison, off the top of my head, was talking about how this is going to provide so much open space. And I want to make the clarification between open space and open land, that open space is something that would be suitable for wildlife, to have habitat and feeding grounds. And in this case, their definition, Northland's definition of open land is essentially lawn. Again, this lawn can have utilities through it. It can have many other structural elements that, I think what you're going to see is that even on that plan, although that's the finished look of it, there's going to be a lot more impacts as they go to develop that property. And I guess one of the final pieces is just to focus on how this bylaw, again, is written so closely tailored to exactly what they already planned to do, that by passing it, you're essentially approving the project. And to the extent that they haven't fully achieved that, they have included a lot of language that says, yes, we'll comply with this, or we'll be limited from that, except to the extent that it's not reasonable. I think in one case, they even, my favorite one is it says, you know, something shall be an objective, meaning, well, we'll try for it, but, but we're not bound to it. And again, I guess in terms of reviewing this going forward, hopefully even beyond tonight for purposes of whether to be on the warrant, we would want to see a number of items tightened up if this were to go forward. And I think that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak to this application?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have to excuse myself to pick up a daughter at Logan on the way back from college, so no disrespect to anyone in the room, but if I leave her hanging there, my wife will kill me. So Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. I'm sorry I have to be.
I've emptied more than one room before, so. I will, will try to be focused and brief. There's a lot of things that people have addressed here. I'm Anthony Chikello. I'm here tonight representing Jack Weeks. Jack is a butter. He's on Carberry Lane at the bottom, right next to the existing road that comes up into the property on the left-hand side. I've been working with this matter with Jack for a long time, ever since, basically, the Carberry property has come into play. And when the Carberry property first came under agreement, Jack was obviously very concerned. And I think, without going through a lot of the history, he has to work with Northland to try to make this project something that he thought he could live with. And I think, at this point, he's ready, you know, he's supportive of the plan for 58 units as it moves forward. But that doesn't mean the work is anywhere near done. I think that, really, what he's looking for is a lot of what we've heard here from various board members and things like that. His focus, really, from the beginning, has been on what are the impacts to him? What are the impacts to the neighborhood? What are the impacts to the town? So, his primary focus is going to be a combination of the aesthetics and the impacts. How are we going to mitigate and manage these things? Number two, how are we going to get clarity as to what the developer has had to do? We've heard a lot tonight about what the developer has said and concerns about the language in the bylaw. I think those are real concerns, because the work on the actual language of the bylaw has just begun. We have a draft, but things need to be tightened up substantially, and we need clarity about what the developer is going to have to do and how the developer is going to have to do it. And we need accountability. There was mentioned earlier tonight about a surety bond. Things like that, things like language that's clearly going to bind the developer to do the things he said he's going to do, are going to be critical moving forward. I, having seen, have seen this process move through, an initial reaction, everybody's visceral reaction is, we don't want this property developed at all. But then, in looking at it and looking at the options, an 18-unit or 23-unit or whatever it would be subdivision, or a 30-plus cluster subdivision, I think everybody's very clear that that would be much, much worse in so many respects than what's been proposed. I think that everybody could get on board if there were some, an effort that was successful to buy down further the unit count. Nobody's going to complain about that. If that doesn't come to fruition, though, something's going to happen with this property, one way or the other. And I think that while nobody wants any of these projects really to go forward, I think there's a reality that something is. I would echo the I would echo the concerns about a citizens petition. You know, the... I think the neighbors, among other people, would be radically dis-served by a citizens petition that would potentially bind people to keep in language that didn't make sense. Because I think that there's a lot of things that are going to have to be changed and tightened up moving forward, and the protections that everybody's looking at. I could get into a lot more detail, but I won't at this time. I know I wanted to represent Jack's position to the Board. I know he's talking with a lot of the other neighbors. And I think, as you heard tonight from the Neighborhood Association, things are moving in the direction where the vast majority of the people, at least that responded to the survey, are supportive of something happening in recognition of that. So I request that you move the matter forward, and then we do a lot of work over the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this floor?
Thank you. Joe Sloan, 55 Concord Avenue. I wanted to take a minute to just comment on the earlier discussion about possibly considering off-site locations for the affordable units to this. I appreciated your comments earlier, Brian, about your initial reaction to it. I was asked to weigh in about a month ago on the concept as it related to a specific property. I'm concerned about two words that I heard used earlier tonight in that discussion. One was distressed, and the other was dilapidated. I understand, as you said, Brian, earlier, I understand the concept, understand what the goal is in this specific project, yet I'm very concerned about how this might be interpreted in town, in different neighborhoods. I urge you to think about where you might know of a property that, at this very moment, you might think might apply to this description, and more specifically where it might not be. There's certain places where there probably aren't too many distressed properties. Again, I understand the concept and the intent. I do think that there's a strong possibility that the way this might be interpreted in all of the neighborhoods in Milton might be different from the way you understand it tonight. And I just urge you to proceed carefully with that as you go forward. And to offer a suggestion, it might be interesting to receive input from people in the neighborhoods. There's a coalition of neighborhood associations that's working really hard for this very thing, and this might be a perfect tool to gauge how the public might think about it. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, great. Boyd's pleasure. Comments, motions?
I move that way submit the draft that Mr. Corcoran produced as a placeholder with the specific understanding that we will work on this in January and have a revision, hopefully by the end of that month.
Second.
Any discussion?
What if we don't?
Then hopefully we'll do it early in February.
We can always pull it.
So, to answer that question, Mike, we can pull it, or we can recommend not to send it back to Planning Board at the town meeting. We can recommend to not approve it at a town meeting. So those would be the possible outcomes if we didn't reach a consensus on language.
And if we develop new language, are we going to, again, take a vote, or whether we endorse it?
We would absolutely have to do that. Yeah, the Board can't endorse it without a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. I'm going to have a... So it's 10:15. We've made a commitment to one of our Board members that we would talk about master plan implementation and budget before we moved on to another meeting. So I just want to chat with the Board very quickly about schedule. One second. Okay, good.
I'm just going to offer up that we... There's two things I would definitely like to discuss. I don't think they'll take a long time, and we can defer the rest of that discussion.
Okay. So I think we can do one of two things as a Board. We can either commit to doing it at the end, or I think we should do it now, one or the other.
Let's commit to doing it at the end, because there's a lot of people still waiting.
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure we had the conversation before.
I just want to make sure that we don't adjourn before we at least talk about the budget, because it has to, the articles have to go to... But it's likely by January 5th.
Well, we also have a second article that's for master plan implementation that we must discuss tonight for that one. We also have to talk about our own budget, those two things we have to talk about tonight. Okay. So with that, we'll call...
Oh, and you're going to do the Ice House, right?
Yes.
I understand, as I recused, there was a question about my recusing. My understanding from talking with town council is that once I have recused on a particular topic, that I must continue to recuse. So I recused myself on this some time ago because of prior involvement with the property owners. So I continue to recuse. Nothing more than that.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to Ice House zoning, and we're going to... We have had a lot of comment on this from the public, so we're going to move through this as quickly as we can tonight. We will take limited public comment. There will be lots of opportunity for additional comments in the public hearing, much like what we just discussed a few minutes ago with regard to Carberry, but we do need to get to the other two items tonight as well. Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you. So Alex, as you promised, I produced a draft. I produced the red line of that draft. And my concern is that we may have difficulty, I may, we may have, we'll see where we net out, but we may have difficulty getting three votes in favor of putting any version of bylaw before town meeting. If that's the case, and if people feel like we can't get there, then I would offer to put a citizens petition before town meeting. But I redrafted Alex's version of the bylaw to modify several things. And I understand from the McKeens that this is, these are fundamental requirements of the bylaw that we need to put forward to town meeting. And so I guess in order, we've done a couple of things. Alex proposes to limit the number of units, residential units, to be 12. We're willing to say 12 as long as it's 10% affordability, but I think the commitment made to those who have urged support, want a larger number of units with greater degree of affordability, so I'm proposing a bonus factor. If there's 25% affordability, that the unit count would grow to 18. We're proposing smaller, minimum size units, 800 square feet for singles as opposed to 900, and 1,000 square feet as opposed to 1,100. We're proposing that units be built in both, in whatever buildings. Alex's proposal would have a standalone market building with perhaps other commercial components, but would not allow residential upstairs. That's a deal breaker. So we need residential on the second floor of that building, and we need the option for residential on the second and third floor of the other smaller building. We think the cafe, although a nice amenity, should be optional. We think the bank is an essential component, particularly because we have banks actually competing to lend at favorable rates and to pay good rent. They are low-traffic generators. They're low-impact, high-value, small physical features, and we think that's important. Alex has proposed that the main building, the market building, be set up against the front yard, the parkway setback, with a facade facing the parkway, but all the parking behind it. That's not acceptable. That draws too narrow a box. It doesn't allow a good site developer to define a site to more better. We think that setbacks are appropriate, but that the site developer ought to have the flexibility to design a setting that works, works for the parkway, works for the conservation land. One of the concerns we have about moving everything towards the parkway end is that you disengage your activity with the conservation land in the rear. And that was an important part of the conversation we've had with the Conservation Commission a year ago, was that we would activate that relationship between the property and the conservation area. That if there were a cafe, that cafe would provide seating that would activate itself towards the rear. So we think that's an important degree of flexibility that needs to be maintained in the site plan. Other than that, I think we're generally accept of Alex's rewrite. I mean, he's put a lot of time into it. We understand what he's trying to do. And so I would request that the Board, if it's going to vote, to put an article before town meeting, put the article before it, as I've redrafted it. We're willing to work with the Board going forward. If we can't get there, I don't want to waste a lot of time tonight. We'll get 10 citizens, we'll take comments, we've got two weeks to revise it. I'll take comments and do the best I can. We'll get 10 citizens, and we'll let town meeting vote. And at the end of the day, town meeting needs to vote on what the two alternatives are for this property, and each of them have to work financially and otherwise for the owner. And we think that we've drawn a sufficiently flexible box in all the work we've done with the neighborhood and the broader neighborhood, and the significant amount of support that we've gotten for that. The neighbors, many of them, suggest that they knew exactly what they were speaking to when they spoke to us a month ago. It just may be appropriate that we get, we need to get this to town meeting. We'll do it one way or the other. So I appreciate your time, but that's what we want to do.
Okay, comments from the Board. April, start with you.
So I really liked the parking in the rear of the building, because I think this is a residential neighborhood, and it shouldn't look like a strip mall. And I think that there's a lot of design alternatives where that could look. I think we can go to any community like Milton, and you can tell me. I don't have a significant amount of opposition, or any opposition at all, to increasing the unit count to 18 with a bonus, a higher percentage of affordability. No concerns about reducing the unit size. In speaking with a couple of folks, I've heard the comment, why would anybody want to live above a grocery store? And I kind of agree with that. I don't know... I mean, it's not me to tell you what the market's going to command, but I find that a tough sell. I continue to think we would be better off if we didn't describe this as a market. But I also heard feedback from people saying that's what every single person who came before us and supported the proposal said they wanted. I mean, I think what I heard is people liked the idea of a place to shop for food. People liked the idea of meeting spots. I don't think those exclusively have to be a grocery store. I think if we cite a grocery store here, that's where we get into a lot of other challenges that could be affecting the financials. So if we're specifically drawing this as a grocery location, I feel like we're boxing ourselves into trouble. I feel like it's going to have a lot of negative impacts that don't necessarily have to be. So I would prefer to see us, I would frankly prefer to see the Board move forward regardless of what the proponents decide to do, and continue the conversation and put something forward that's a village-style, commercial, mixed-use development at the site. If town meeting wants to approve it, great. If they don't, fine. But I think that would be a great use for the site. I think it would be consistent with what the neighbors said they wanted, the ones that were in support. And I also think it would address a lot of the concerns that we heard. So that's what I would suggest we do.
Mike?
Nothing right now.
Alex? You've sort of spoken.
Well, my draft actually addressed all the concerns that people raised. And the people said they wanted a market. That's what everyone said. We want a market. And saying, no market, that doesn't, that's not acceptable to me. The people said that they wanted to have a coffee shop-type area, which is either part of the market or separate. I provided for that. It was important to people. It actually was important to people to say that, let's put a bank in in place of a coffee shop, is not acceptable to me. Putting units on top of a supermarket is crazy, as far as I'm concerned. It's expensive. You've got plumbing running right over the shopper's heads. It's just not... I mean, if you're in the big city, fine, you can do it. But here, that is, makes no sense whatsoever. The people said they want to protect the parkway. Protect the parkway. The people said they want the conservation area respected. This respects the conservation area. It gives a suitable amount of housing, but you've got to, you'll say that, let's not worry about square footage. I have taken the square footage of the Milton Marketplace, which is 20,000-plus, plus a little, and said, and the Milton Marketplace is on a somewhat bigger lot. I said, we're not going to have a density greater than the Milton Marketplace here, although I make an exception. I say that if you provide 25% affordable housing, you can then have a bonus 6,000 square feet above what you would otherwise have. You're talking 30,000, 40,000 square feet of area. I'm talking 20,000 or 26,000 square feet of area. We're way, way off. And how you get there, I don't know. You say that you haven't spent any money on these plans, and you come up and you say, this is what is financially feasible. I mean, where is the independent justification of what you say that you need 30,000 to 40,000 square feet of area? It just isn't there. And I'm sure Ms. McKean would like to have it, but there are others who don't. I have made a proposal, which, if it were developed, would meet all the issues that the neighborhood has raised. I find that your suggested changes are unsatisfactory, and I would never support them as far as submitting an article, and I would never support them at town meeting.
So my comments are, again, not going to be surprising. I find this to be a bit, way too specific, because the developer, in this case, unlike Carberry, is not even in the room. This is a for-sale site. It's been made very clear that this is a for-sale site. And, you know, I think if we approve this, I think that's fine, but I think we'll be back at it again in a year, because I think that whoever buys the site will be back looking for a new zoning. So, and that might be, that might be perfectly acceptable, at least move the ball forward. Having said that, generally, there are a few real critical issues that I think I want to raise quickly tonight, and I think some of them are unintentional. A 14,000-square-foot market with a 14,000-square-foot basement that is actually allowed to be used for 14,000 square feet. In my experience in retail, that would allow for a full-size national grocer to come here. They could figure out how to make that work as a 28,000-square-foot store using that 14,000-square-foot basement for stockroom, storage, food prep. So I think we should be very careful in looking at the sizing of this, that we do not allow a grocery use in the basement here, because I think that would make this way too easy for a national grocer to come here. Cafe use, I agree, is an important part of the site. I worry about making it a required use, only because I'd hate to see the entire project fail because there's not a grocery store. Perhaps making it a required use of the grocery store or within the grocery store makes sense, because at least then we're achieving the concern of the community. But we're not putting the entire project at risk if we can't get a cafe to locate at this location. I think that we should consider allowing for alcoholic beverages here, especially in the smaller format markets. Again, in my experience, I find that that's a key component of their sales, sort of a high-end wine cheese. high-end wine cheese, microbeer selection is often seen in most of these smaller markets. So I'd want us to consider something like that. I think we should put in something here that specifically requires that restaurant uses require a separate special permit. I don't think they should be allowed by right. I think they should actually have to go get a special permit on top of the special permit so that you can regulate the specific type of restaurant, the parking that would be required. I think we should consider an FAR limit here, just as a way of guiding the size of the development. I have some adjustments that I'd want to make to the parking counts. I think, in some cases, the, I don't remember what specifically put in here, but I can't remember if it was one per four, one per five. I'd like to see it one per five, but we can have that discussion. There's a couple other salient and important points. Oh, on the apartments, for me, I'm actually less concerned about unit count and more concerned about variability of housing type. So for me, you know, I'd love to see us allow for a certain amount of square footage upon which we apply a certain number of parking spaces required, and then let the developer determine that within that square footage, what size of unit is appropriate. There's an argument that micro-units or one and one-and-a-half bedrooms would be all we should allow here. It keeps additional kids out of the school system, it provides an alternative form of housing for different people in the town, it would provide a housing opportunity for people at a lower price point. And then, so those are my general comments. I mean, I have comments about building design and setbacks, but I'm not going to raise them all tonight. I will, I would agree to put this forward, Alex's version, as a placeholder, because I think it's, it's, there's, he's done a lot of work on it, and I think it's workable. I'm going to have a lot of discussion points. I know the applicant's going to have a lot of discussion points, and whether we get to yes, I think is very much up in the air, but I would support putting this forward as a placeholder, much like what we just did a few minutes ago for the Carberry property. That said, anything from the public?
Thank you. Joe Sloan, 55 Concord Avenue. I received that Alex's draft last Friday, worked hard over a few days to compile some notes, and as I mentioned last, at the last meeting, because there have been many drafts over the past year, including the one that went to town meeting in February, there are a lot of really important points that, and a lot of hard work, that this board and other people have put into getting to this point. And so I think it's important to not lose some of those important points. Submitted that comment document to Tim, and hopefully it'll be circulated. It'd be nice, frankly, if there was time and the opportunity to be able to go through all that points, but I understand that, you know, it's not a public hearing, so I appreciate even your offering the opportunity for some feedback. I think I would like to just focus for a few minutes on the topic of the conservation land and what is behind this property. I think it's really clear from just what we heard tonight that there's a conceptual disagreement about what this property is now and what the proponent would like to see it be. This property, essentially for the past year, has been marketed as a waterfront property. You know, without being called that, this document that's been made available to potential clients or people who might be tenants of this development, right on its, on the front of it says, it says, access to pond behind property. There's no access to the pond or the conservation land at this property at this point in time. It talks, it uses this term that we've heard over and over again, this concept of reactivating the Pope's Pond waterfront. There is no Pope's Pond waterfront. There's a trail, there's conservation land. It talks about enhancing the connection to the Pope's Pond area. Again, there is no connection, there is nothing there. And on the last page, there's even a photograph that says Pope's Pond directly behind the property. And you heard tonight, you heard Mr. Corcoran say that, that the work that went into this draft, that the planning board is considering putting forward, is the opposite of the way he sees this property. He sees this property as taking advantage of the conservation land and the pond behind it. And I contend that the zoning should address the current situation. The conservation land is protected, there's 48 acres of land there. It was, it was hard fought, it was an investment on the part of the town. People expect it to be treated as conservation land. I'm concerned about language in the draft that enables access to the pond. I detailed that in my comments. There's a specific section where the zoning enables access, it talks about fence, the fence that would be along the back of the property, having openings that would enable access to the pond. It talks about trails specifically. And I think that, I think that that is the purview of the Conservation Commission. I see a potential legal situation if the town were to zone, to enact zoning that allowed for access to the pond, and the Conservation Commission said, we don't want there to be access to the pond. I mean, who's, who's correct in this case? If you have a document that says that you can access the pond and Conservation Commission says no, do we have a, do we have an expensive legal battle in that case? It's not waterfront property. I don't think that the proposed zoning should enable it to be conceived and treated as waterfront property. I think that the buffers that are explained in this draft should be enhanced. It's curious that the buffers, that the setbacks, the language is consistently setback and not buffer. The setbacks to the conservation land are negotiable and can be qualified under certain conditions, but the setback to the property that specifically would have a dwelling on it, and that applies to one property, that's not expressed as being conditional. That would be hard and fast, but why can we think of adjusting setbacks to publicly-owned conservation land and not worry about that neighbor who's next door? So again, I, I suggest that the board take, take the direction of planning for what exists, not what could be, and not what somebody envisions the property to be, but what exists? We have conservation land. There should be a buffer, that conservation land should be protected. We shouldn't be concerned about zoning for a view to the conservation land and approving the view or providing the opportunity to access or see the conservation land. There are people that the Conservation Commission has issued enforcement orders all along that section of property, people who have taken advantage of the fact that they have conservation land behind their house. There's been tree clearing, there's been trail building, there's all kinds of things that have happened along that way. And the Conservation Commission realizes that they need to take control back of that land, they need to reestablish the boundary, make it clear to all the property owners along that stretch. And I, I just would not like to see the town enable any more taking advantage of that conservation land.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your comments, your written comments are on the record. Everybody received a copy, and we'll make sure that they're part of the discussion when the public meeting comes up.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak to this tonight? Okay. Motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to put forward Alex's draft zoning amendment for consideration for the spring town meeting.
As a placeholder?
As a placeholder, correct.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Someone grab Cheryl, please? We can be out of here by 11 o'clock. Merry Christmas to you as well.
Good night.
Thank you.
Sure, while we're waiting. When will we discuss this again in more detail?
It'll be at the next meeting, so January 12th and 26th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Welcome back, Cheryl. I'm going to just, I'm going to let you tell us, well, first off, let's quickly talk about it, well, I was going to do the budget first, but I think we should have your conversation first.
Yes, so, at a request suggestion, Bill contacted MAPC, and he put in an application, which you have a copy of, for a technical assistance study of this area. So basically, this is pretty much the same scope as what is in Harriman proposal, with a little addition that was added by MAPC.
MAPC added the piece about the walkway.
Yeah.
The second piece added in there was something that I came up with with MAPC, because it's something that is ongoing down in that area anyways, the mixed-use and combining properties.
So the initial discussion feedback, Bill, to this was?
They reviewed their applications yesterday. They looked at them again today, they're looking at municipal management, municipal management articles right now. They are coming back on July 10th to look at other grant applications, and that's where we are, is coming back on July 10th, January 10th. I wish it was July, January 10th.
It's July, no, we don't always wait until?
No, I, for the warmth factor. January 10th, they'll be back to look at this, and we'll know more after that day.
So the Master Plan Implementation Committee met on Monday, and we discussed waiting to hear back from MAPC on the favorability of this proposal before doing anything further about Harriman. So what I had done in terms of thinking that we would be talking about was, was going to discuss how this study fits it into the recommendations in the master plan. But I think, given the time, we can postpone that if, since we're going to wait until January 10th, at least sometime after January 10th, to get that feedback, okay?
Great.
Then the other thing was?
Can I just chime in real quick?
Sure.
I don't know, this is something that's been made clear before. The Harriman proposal that we're talking about, this is one of several firms that we reached out to, according to, I forget what the chapter is, but the procurement laws for design services. Harriman's the one we like the best. It's a firm that a former planning board member, Emily Ennis, works for. She had nothing to do with this project. We spoke with people other than her at the firm. We received other bids that the Master Plan Implementation Committee reviewed, so just want to make sure that's, you know, out there in the open for people who are concerned about this sort of thing.
Right, and so Harriman checked with the State Ethics Office before even talking to us, to make sure that there was?
Right, it's Chapter 30B for the procurement component.
So that was something that was addressed even before we solicited a proposal or had conversations with them. So I think, like I said, given the time, we'll postpone that detailed conversation. But the other thing I want, that we did talk about also, was on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and I think a little bit with Katie when she was here before, was in order to make progress on the master plan, that resources, and I think the master plan itself identified that resources would be required to make significant implementation. The committee itself feels as if we are still getting our arms around how best to move the master plan forward in terms of outreach to responsible parties, because the implementation is really a town-wide effort. It's not the planning board, it's not the selectmen, it's not the Master Plan Implementation Committee. There are a number of goals and strategies with responsible parties identified. So those members of the committee have reached out to all of those parties, had a conversation. Are you aware of the master plan? Where are the goals that are set forth in it? Have you been thinking about it in terms of your planning for next year? Katie and I spoke to Emery Fagan, and since they've spoken to the new town administrator, Mike Dennehy?
Dennehy.
Dennehy, I always get that wrong, about building into the town budgets and strategic thinking on an annual basis, implementation of the master plan. So given that, the Board of Selectmen voted, I think it was Tuesday, to put forth an article to town meeting for support of implementation of the master plan with a budget of $50,000 to be determined what initiatives that $50,000 would be used for, with the idea that the Implementation Committee would be discussing it in the next, in the coming months, and have an idea in terms of, in the recommendations to town meeting, what that $50,000 could be used for. And it was suggested at the MPIC meeting, that the, and also by Katie, that the planning board consider co-sponsoring that article. So, so that's my suggestion, if you have ideas or thoughts or questions about that. So that way, it would not be in the planning board budget implementation, nor in the selectmen's budget, but especially, you know, it would be discussed at town meeting with that particular appropriation, for that particular use.
Let's the town vote on whether or not we're going to spend money on the master plan. Yes, Alex?
It's an article jointly submitted for the appropriation of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, subject to approval by the planning board and the BOF, the Board of Selectmen, and to seek a $50,000 appropriation. The thinking was that it could be included in both the contingent budget and the non-contingent budget, the latter through free cash.
Thank you. So that was what was voted at Board of Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Alex?
My feeling is that we're the planning board, we do the planning, why isn't this money in our budget? It seems to me that this is a total and around our review. This is, this is a way to, maybe the selectmen feel the planning board is not doing a good job, because it sounds like it to me.
But actually, the master?
To give $50,000 to the planning board and give zero to the planning board, it would seem to me that, at the very least, the planning board would be in charge of how this money was dispersed, because it's a planning function, and we're the planning board. And this is just, in my view, unsatisfactory.
The planning, actually, the master plan implementation is only partially responsible, the planning board's only responsible for portions of its implementation. The Parks Department, the Board of Selectmen, the School Department, Conservation Commission, Historic Commission, there's a number of responsible parties. So that's why the Board of Selectmen suggested that it would be jointly sponsored. But no appropriation would be made unless it was recommended by the planning board or the Board of Selectmen towards the implementation under their jurisdiction.
Any other comments? So my concern of putting it in the planning board budget, Alex, would be, would we, to have it in the planning board budget, would, how would we fund it in a way that we would be comfortable, at the time we voted to put it into our budget? For instance, if we said tonight we were going to put $50,000 into the master plan implementation budget, would we feel comfortable putting in a $50,000 line item without a basis for that expense coming from Master Plan Implementation Committee? And so, the reason I would ask that is because if we're not, then that would mean that the Master Plan Implementation Committee would have to come to us, tell us what they wanted, which would push it out another year. So I'm just trying to understand the mechanism, because we've had the conversations about the $15,000, understanding that that was dog-eared for codification, so maybe that's the, maybe that's the rub. I'm just trying to understand how you, how you better see it.
I mean, that is the rub. I mean, I wouldn't vote to, you know, we got the $15,000 because we told the warrant committee what we were going to use it for. And if we can't use it for what we got it for, we shouldn't use it at all, that's my view.
So then in your, so two more questions. So then in your, you'd want to see a master plan implementation line under our general expense, $50,000.
$50,000, then if there's money left over, we'll give it back.
So then another concern I've heard is, the, you know, the planning board budget gets sort of approved as part of the general sweeping votes at town meeting. Do we want town meeting to have the purview to say, we want to spend $50,000 on master plan implementation at the discretion of Board of Selectmen, or maybe it's the discretion of the planning board alone? Do you want town meeting to give you that endorsement on that? Because the planning board budget doesn't get very much attention at town meeting.
No, but it... No, but it would if it had, I mean, because it's usually $7,000.
Right.
But if it were $57,000, people would, especially in a year where there's an override, you know, we don't know, I mean, why would we save $50,000 to the Master Plan Implementation Committee if we have no idea what they're going to use it for?
It's actually not to the committee. It's a separate, it's for implementation of the master plan as requested by the Board of Selectmen or by the planning board for its implementation, because we're, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is advisory to the planning board and to the Board of Selectmen and to the other departments who have some responsibility in implementing the master plan.
And to town meeting.
And to town meeting.
To give a report to town meeting.
Town administrator probably, right?
Is it in the general fund?
I didn't hear that.
Who's responsible for the expenditures? Who decides?
Which budget does it lie in?
Or where is it? Where's the money? Yeah. What line item is the money sitting in?
Why doesn't the?
Does it get its own account? Does it get its own code?
It will get its own account.
So essentially, it has its own account, it would be coded against that account.
Be aligned.
And at the end of the year, it goes back to the general fund if it does.
Yeah, but who makes the decisions?
The Board of Selectmen and Planning Board.
Like Cheryl was saying, if it's, or what I'm understanding is, if it's $50,000, it might go to the Parks Department, because it's something that the Master Planning Committee has decided has to move forward with parks or something.
Well, they would have to, it would be, let's just say, for example, through the outreach to the various departments, the Parks Department said, in order for us to make progress on this item, which you've identified as a, we are the lead party on, we will need resources. And then they would say, we would like to request use of those earmarked resources for this goal. And then, you know, we would, the committee itself could reach out to various departments, and then they would, we would have a menu, right? And we would send it back to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, say, here are the various requests for that earmarked fund of using it for master plan implementation. And then the two bodies, the Board of Selectmen and the planning board, would decide which of those were going to get the priority that year.
Even if it's, even if it's related to like the Parks Department or something, the planning board, what do we, what do we add?
If it's part of the recommendations of the master plan itself in terms of its implementation.
It's our plan.
Yeah, the planning board would definitely want to weigh in on who expended, because we approved the plan, absolutely. The question is, should the planning board have sole authority over who makes the decision or does it support and selectmen need to be advised?
As I understand it, it's either or, and it should be, at the very least, both.
Is it either or, Bill, or is it both in there, that language?
With both, I could, I could do it, but either or is not a, not a good way of doing it.
So, I mean?
The committee voted jointly to submit a warrant article for the appropriation of the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
But then there's another piece to it.
Subject to the planning board and/or the Board of Selectmen.
So get rid of the or.
And.
So if we take or out?
Get rid of the or, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say, I read through the master plan, which is, you know, this long, and there's all this flowery language, and I get overwhelmed. But when I saw your spreadsheet, which I thought was very helpful, I mean, there's a lot of things on here that I think are important. Preservation of historic structures, preservation of views, I mean, it's a lot of stuff that we're talking about here in real time. And, you know, there's no way to make any progress on a plan like that unless you have resources and somebody driving the bus. So, you know, I would definitely support the appropriation, whether it's in our budget or outside of our budget, I'm sort of indifferent about. I'll leave it to you guys to find that out.
I think it's important that, in my opinion, I think it's important the town meeting continue to see that master plan be, that, first of all, the math, that the town meeting be continuing to endorse the process, meaning it's saying, you should be doing this, not the planning board sort of throwing it into a line item and having any sorts of appearances of us doing it on our own agenda. And then secondly, I think it's important for, you know, town meeting to get to see a pretty, again, toward to that point, I think it's very transparent. I worry about the $50,000 sort of disappearing into a huge town budget and not getting noticed as part of the approval.
And I got to say, I do think it would be helpful for town meeting to vote whether or not they want to see this happen. I think that that is probably an important part, so.
So anything that the Master Plan Committee moves forward with in the next fiscal year has to be $50,000 or less?
Or matched by a grant or something.
Or matched by a grant. But MAPC would be a match grant, so we would use part of it, and they, we would get part of it.
Individual departments and the town can't, I mean?
That would come out of the Board of Selectmen's budget generally. So they took the line item out of their budget to put into this. If we didn't do this, they'd put a line item back in their budget. But it was because of this, I think Emery Fagan suggested it to Katie, that to do it this way with this jointly sponsored.
It's all a separate line item.
Totally separate line item, so it could be identified that way and discussed that way to a branch point at town meeting when there's so much budget stuff being discussed. And if you had where things weren't approved, even at, like, I know from being on the warrant committee, all the way down to the last day, when the last dollar of revenue is known, you're still making adjustments. And if you can add something back in, and it's right there, and it's clear, like, when we did the master plan funding, I was on the warrant committee at that time advocating for that funding, two different cycles, the phase one, the phase two, that was a line item that we discussed it every single time we went over the totals. Looking at $90 million, you know, that $50,000 is not going to sound like a lot unless you're down to, it's a teacher, or it's something else.
So it looks like we're at a point where we can get a motion with the amendment, hopefully. So I'd seek that motion perhaps from Cheryl, who's looking to?
I'll make that motion that he read, striking the word "or," so that it reads to have the planning board and the Board of Selectmen approve the use of those funds.
That the Board of Selectmen and the planning board jointly submit a warrant article for an appropriation for a master plan, for the master plan implementation, subject to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen approving expenditures of the appropriation and to seek a $50,000 appreciation, appropriation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Anything else, Cheryl?
No.
Okay, we have a?
Just that we would put this, the other discussion on the agenda of this, the second meeting in January, not the first one, after you hear from them.
26th.
Yeah, okay.
The spreadsheet that you all have, let's not talk about it now, but I would recommend you look at it, find out what you like, what you think is important, what you think is not important, and be prepared to discuss that.
Last item, we have our existing budget in, Bill submitted the same budget that we had last year. Are we all good with that?
We have another $15,000?
Yes.
We do.
We have $15,000.
What for this year?
I did not have to put that down yet. I had to level fund what we did last.
Just general, okay, that's fine.
No, it's for, it says, it's under a line called miscellaneous, but the miscellaneous last year was for zoning.
You might say it was for planning.
I think planning would be a good idea.
Yes.
Let's have a line, you're doing the level funded budget, let's change line item to planning.
I will write that in my narrative.
And if that comes up, I think one of the things to think about is, some of the things that get referred back to us from town meeting are not necessarily things in the master plan. So you could say that these are things.
I have no problem finding work for it.
So you will not, though, be putting money in the contingent budget, because we're now putting that in the separate articles, correct? Are you going to keep it in there as well? Are you going to drop it down the amount?
It's up to you. I didn't say here. I added, my level funded budget from last year was $15,000 for planning, and then under the, that was non-contingent. For the contingent, I put in $30,000. Last year, what? We talked about, could we do more? And you wanted, you wanted to increase that number. I did, I put it in for $30,000. But we don't have a contingent budget, so it became a mood issue.
Okay, because one of the other things that I'll just say is that there's plenty of initiative, and $50,000 isn't extraordinary amount to move things forward on that master plan. So if you have that in there, and you want to keep it in there and let it see whether it stays or not, I guess.
People at home probably do or do not know is contingent means an override, non-contingent means no override.
Alex?
So, second.
So we have approval of the budget, though?
It is, we voted.
Yes.
We voted on the planning board's budget? Did I miss that?
Oh, we don't need to vote on it.
We have to vote on it, we just all nodded.
Oh, I see, okay.
All right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't have a choice.